Are you all right in here?
I think we're blowing it up. The chamber is going to spit it. It's blowing it again. Oh, God.
Good meeting. He's on the stairs.
Oh, okay.
Let's try it.
Find it dial first?
No.
Okay. Let's try this again. Oh, right. I just found that.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant's ID. You are in the meeting now. You are the first participant. Please stand by. This meeting is being recorded.
Do you need that? So it's more in front of you then?
No.
Are you in? Are you on there?
Yeah.
You're not going to wear your headphones?
No, if you're going to leave.
Board members? Okay. Let's go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Amador County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, 9:00 AM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegi-- oh. The board did meet and close session on Items 1A. Direction was given. Item 2B, direction was given. There were three 1 cases, and on two of those, direction was given. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on. I'd like to, at this moment, take some time for a moment of silence for our military members that tragically lost their lives in Afghanistan last week. So let's just give a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. Moving on to public matters not on the agenda. These are discussion items only, and no action will be taken. Any person may address the board at this time on any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note, there is a three-minute time limit per person. Would anybody like to? Yeah. Actually, we have a special presentation from Cal Fire on the Caldoor fire, so you can speak as long as you need.
All right. I'll try to keep it at three minutes for you now. Won't go too long. All in all, news myself. First of all, my name's Nate Barkley. I am one of our Assistant Chiefs here in the Cal Fire Amber Eldorado Unit. I'm also Liaison Officer for Cal Fire Incident Management Team 6. As you guys know, the Caldoor fire has been burning for a couple of weeks now. There's some exhausted folks, whether it be first responders or evacuees. So you guys should all have the packet in front of you today's information for the Caldoor incident. We are still in unified command with US Forest Service. It's burned 191,607 acres. And we do have 33,000-plus structures still threatened and 486 damaged or destroyed. And I would want to, again, most of you guys are watching the briefing online. Hopefully, speak to the fire. It did cross into the Amador County line yesterday. I was up there with the Sheriff of Alpine County and a couple deputies from ASO as well between Silver Lake and Kirkwood, and it made a pretty good run to the top of Thunder Mountain yesterday. So it is now--
That'd be like the Martin Meadows area where--
Yeah. Yep. Right before the passing lane when you go up 88 there. So it is in the county now. We'll be submitting for federal management assistance agreement for Amador and Alpine Counties because it hit that threshold. That's where I'm going to go right after this. So it is holding the top of Thunder Mountain as we speak. But to be honest with you, the way that we're getting the winds yesterday and the way that it blew Highway 50, the fire is burning incredibly intense. It's incredibly-- it's resistant to our suppression efforts as we all have seen the last few days. So again, there's that piece out there that did cross into Amador County. Hopefully, that is the only piece. But again, the lack of resources around the fire is making it really challenging. We are going to see some more black line in Division Alpha here in the next couple of days, and hopefully more in Division Papa there, too, so it stops threatening the Amador County line there. So other than that, I think most of you guys have seen the updates throughout the week. I appreciate the supervisors for attending those briefings. I encourage anybody to log on and watch our operational briefings. And if there's any cooperators here in the county that have infrastructure needs, please attend the Cooperators Meeting that we hold at 10 o'clock there at the ICP.
Just a quick question. So the black line is containment?
It is. The black line is containment. And what that represents, and most of you have heard, that's-- there's some hard work fought in that, and it's taking some time. But we're very cautious when we put the block line on there because of the drought conditions this year and the winds. We do not want even an oak leaf or an ember to come out of there. So we're getting mop up, or I like to call it, we like to see mud for the first couple hundred feet before that black line gets in there.
Okay.
So--
Do we know, is the, you know, the controlled burn that was set in the Caples area in 2019, is that-- has that actually benefited at all?
You know, I was watching it the other day from Maiden's Grave, and it was-- it's hard to tell because it was consumed so rapidly. Definitely nothing that we could have used for a control line for any reason, but it did get consumed already within the fire, so yeah.
Any other board questions or comments?
Just a couple of questions. A lot of people--
Your mic.
--are in the Tahoe area of two, and a lot of people own property up there. But could you address that, as well as how long you anticipate Highway 88 and 50 being closed? If you can even address that, you best guess.
Yeah, I'll work backwards on that. The anticipated closures of those, I definitely can't speak to right now. As long as we don't see a black line on that map in those areas, those highways are definitely going to remain closed. So I'd imagine for some time still. As far as Tahoe, I was up there late, late, late last night. It did spot, as some of you have seen on the news, into the Christmas Valley area, which is south of Myers. It is running up that side, and I guess we'll call it the backside of Heavenly, those mountains back there. And we are going direct on it. They had some, a lot of fire engines up there last night trying to go direct on it and put that out. So to be honest with you, through the winds today are going to be telltale. The next couple of days, we're under a red flag warning, and that's heavy timber as well. So we'll cross our fingers and do everything we can. And like I said, with the drought conditions, it has been more than challenging to go direct on this. So, yeah.
This is Supervisor Brown. If we get out into the McCollum Wilderness, is there any thoughts on that side?
Yeah, and that's-- I'm not going to-- I don't want to speak too much to that because that is in the Forest Service preview. Or so there is-- hopefully, we don't get there. Obviously, we'll treat it like we do any other flank, but there are going to be some other considerations with the Forest Service as that is a wilderness. So I don't want to speak to what actions they've approved or not. So, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And like I said, we're doing everything we can to get-- we understand people have been out of their homes for quite some time now, and we're working diligently to get everybody back in.
Nate, we have another question from Supervisor Neto.
You have a couple of questions. Yeah, he went over-- he slop, basically jumped the road between Silver Lake and Kirkwood, but also Division N down Iron Mountain. Is it going over the road in that area, too?
It has not. They did-- we did burnout around Mormon Immigrant Trail. There's a little piece, and you can't see it on this map, that was out there between Mormon Immigrant and Highway 88, just south of it. And they did burn that out yesterday to get that locked in, or we call it burnout. So that has not jumped in that area.
So the stuff I've seen, like in satellites, probably just like heat signature, but not fire?
Yeah.
Okay. Because that had me kind of concerned, with a bunch of spot fires, like, oh, God.
Yep. Yeah, and you'll see right now, we're actively opening up Highway 88 from Mormon Immigrant all the way up to Kirkwood as a good control line. It's on a ridge top, so we should be very successful. So but right now, yeah, the only place that's jumped into the county is between Silver Lake and Kirkwood.
What are the chances of that fire coming back up around, like, oh, like Lake Kirkwood and going into Kirkwood South?
I mean, this year, again, with the drought conditions and what we saw on Highway 50 the other day, with-- it's a very similar fuel model with all the granite. The possibility is there this year. Like I said, the-- we call it the probability of ignition. And what that means is it's been up in the 90s. And if I take 100 matches and drop them on the ground, 90 of those will start a fire. And we've been in the high 90s. So even with the sparse granite, the dry fuels up there, and our probability of ignitions with the winds, it has, again, made it super challenging to contain. And it's-- every tree and every bush in the granite the other day was on fire. So don't want to give a grim outlook. We're going to do everything we can to keep it out of that area. There's a lot more granite in that area, as most of you know. So we have an optimistic view there. Yeah.
Quite honestly, if you told me a fire had burned up in that area like it did, I wouldn't have believed you.
Yeah.
It's been surprising.
It has been.
You know, are you-- there's a lot of dead standing trees, a lot of dead downed trees. Has that been an issue in intensity of this fire, trying to control this fire, put it in fire line, yada, yada, yada?
Yeah, like anything else. I mean, it's dead dry fuels. The forest itself is very thick, and it's very dry. So that just adds to the intensity of the fire.
Yeah. No, I saw somewhere-- I can't pull up exactly off the top of my head-- where like the-- what a quart of wood is equal to as far as gasoline. I think it comes out like 500 or 1,000 gallons of gas per acre, basically, equivalent in dead wood out there. And it's-- yeah, there's awful lot of dead trees, and I was kind of curious if they had a much effect trying to control that fire.
Yeah, like I said, there is a component of dead trees up there, for sure, and it just does add to the fuel, obviously, there. So do want to say thank you to the Amador County Sheriff's for being engaged from day one to-- they've been incredibly helpful and a great cooperator, obviously, with the evacuation warnings that were here in the county and now the orders that are on the eastern side, so.
Thank you.
This is Supervisor Brown. I also want to say thank you to Chief Blankingham, being able to keep his promise of keeping the fire out of the Division W from coming back into Amador County. That was an intense fight in that area when you only had 242 people to keep it out of Amador County in that area. That was very much appreciated.
Thank you. If there's any more questions or questions online?
No, I think I would echo what Supervisor Brown said. I think it's-- yeah, I think their efforts to keep that there were probably-- it's probably a hard fight. And if we come this direction, it would have been pretty ugly. You know anything about the Ant Hill Road Army, too?
We talked about that yesterday. I didn't look that up last night, so I'll check it. I'll dig deeper into that.
I guess some people took some dozers and stuff and put some line in. I heard Cal Fire used that line to stop part of that fire down the lower end. So I thought, hmm, pretty interesting.
Yeah.
But yeah, overall, ugly situation. Appreciate your efforts. I mean, I do appreciate your honesty.
Yeah, absolutely. And for the public, again, please, if you don't have the link, get the link. Watch the Cooperators Meetings. Watch the debriefing so you're well informed. We encourage everybody to stay away from the social media chat pages and refer to the incident information as the information. Again, there's been a lot of rumors out there. There always will be with social media. But again, please follow the websites and the incident information for reliable information. And the biggest thing right now that we can ask is just to reduce the risk of another-- prevent another fire from starting. That's one thing we don't want. So again, the dragging the chains, the weed eaters, the lawn mowers, please don't use those in an inappropriate way. And keep an eye out. If we see something, say something, call 911, and we'll get those firefighters there early.
I think actually what you said is there's a lot of truth to that. And I would urge people, if you've got projects you're looking at doing, you might want to delay them. If you're thinking about taking a motorbike ride, especially out in the grasslands and the woods, don't take it until this thing kind of gets-- where you got more people available. You've got activities you want to do. If you don't have to do them, don't do them. Go to the beach.
Yeah.
Good advice.
Yeah, we definitely don't want something else to start again. We still have a few months left of fire season, or the fire year, we'll call it now, and things are still getting drier, which is saying something because it is incredibly dry out there right now. So again, whatever we can do as a community to keep each other safe and stopping another fire from starting, that would be greatly appreciated.
Your cause is still listed as under investigation, and I know some of these fires this year have been started by arsonists. So this one, is there any urgency to find out how it started or try to ascertain how it started?
Yeah, it is under investigation. It's been diligently looked at from the time it started. So other than that, I can't speak to that, but it is an ongoing investigation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And one more thing, too. I think-- does stand density have any effect on fire intensity while you're seeing out there?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we always like to see the canopy thinned out so we don't get those tree-to-tree-to-tree runs, or the crown runs is what we refer to it. So thinning is obviously-- would slow the fire down. Again, this year, it's just so incredibly dry, and the fuel load in there is definitely assisted with the movement of this fire.
Yeah, I think we're probably talk-- we have a Forest Service issue. We'll probably talk about that there. But I think we need to be managing our forest more to help you out, to help us out.
All right. Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. It's for your time, and we'll try to keep everybody informed.
Thank you. Please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public matters not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sean Michael Krilicich here, and I'm going to save my written comments for later when you talk about the fires and the Forest Service issue and what we can do about that. But first of all, I'd just like to thank the firefighters, their support crews, and everybody involved. And thank you for taking the time to come in here and keep us all informed. But then I'd like to go back to the issue of water, of course, and dryness, and just remind this board that the Amador Water Agency Board of Directors voted last Thursday to make water rates in Jackson. So on December 1st, Jackson will be paying over $700 per acre foot of water that they receive. Now, in May, that's the same agency sold that water to Jackson Valley Irrigation District, who's not even a customer of the agency, for $20 an acre foot. Now, I'm an agriculturalist, and I believe we should have water for agriculture, but that's just not right because Jackson also pays-- and it's all the wholesale customers. But I'll just focus on Jackson since they're about half of the total volume of the wholesale customers. It's-- they also pay debt service and, you know, administration fees on top of that $737 or so dollars per acre foot that they're paying. They're going to pay on December 1st. And I'd like to ask every member of this board to do more, to be more vocal and more serious about how serious this is for our community. Because as this fire burns, I think we can all recognize that it'd be better if the space around our houses was green. And if water is unaffordable in Amador County, the space around our houses is not going to be green. That's a serious issue. And I think as firefighters and everyone here can get-- take an imagination of-- it-- when the fire's happening, there's never enough water to go around. Never. So we need to get that water down on the ground beforehand. We have the ability to do that here in Amador County. We're using only a third of our water rights and contracts. We have the ability to turn the area around our homes and businesses and towns green. We're not doing it, and the Amador Water Agency is continuing to preclude the ability to do that. Please act as individuals and as a board to stop this madness. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. May? Take--
Yeah, we surprised you. But of course, you still haven't gotten to my item on the lawsuit. I guess you'll talk about that later, and then I hope you're going to come out and say, oh, he'll build whatever he wants. That's probably not going to happen. Let me, again, talk about things. Brian and Jeff have been outstanding in providing information to folk. We've got friends, and actually, one of couples that we know have virtually all of their-- everything, trucks, boats, cars, everything stored at our house. They're-- so that if they have to evacuate, all they have is a truck and a flatbed trailer. They're going to throw whatever clothing, other household goods into it to be able to get out of town. And who knows? Great things are going. They might wind up staying at our house because they got everything else there. Okay. Last item, Richard, my favorite subject. Let's sue the Regional Water Quality Control Board. I have no clue as to why we don't do that. I know County Council thinks it's pointless, but how the hell do you know? If you sue them, they have to respond. And they're so damn arrogant that you should sue them just because of that. You know, again, I look at this headline, "Water Board Green Lights Contamination." They're just throwing it in your face, okay? That's all exactly what they're doing. They're saying basically, "Up yours, we don't care. We're going to do what we want to do." Guys, that needs to stop. It really needs to stop. Sue them. They'll have to respond. Maybe we won't get anything out of it, but we'll have a response, and we can use that with Newsom, if he's still in office, to say, okay, enough's enough. Enough's enough. Thank you.
Well, you know, everything's on the table. All right. Any other public comment? Okay. So I'm looking for approval of the agenda as is.
Remove.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Neto and a second by Supervisor Forster. And could we do a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. And at this time, Item 7N will be removed for future consideration. So we will be approving the consent agenda for all items with the exception of that. Do we have a motion?
Heard move approval. Second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Forster and a second from Supervisor Brown. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on to the regular agenda. Item 5A is an update by the county public health officer. In this case, it's going to be Dr. Robert Hartman. And take it away.
Thank you very much, Chairman Axe and Supervisors. Thank you for the privilege of presenting to the board today in lieu of Dr. Kerr, who is on a much deserved break this week. So our August 31st, 2021 update is that there are 2,609 confirmed cases of COVID-19 to date in Amador County residents. This does exclude Yule Creek State Prison inmates. 1,375 of these confirmed cases have occurred since January 1st, 2021. To date, 209 Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized due to COVID-19. 15 COVID-19 patients are currently in Sutter Amador Hospital, Tenor Amador County residents. And of these, only one is fully vaccinated. Two Amador County residents are hospitalized out of county. Unfortunately, 44 Amador County residents and nine Yule Creek State inmates have died of COVID-19. We all express our sincere sympathy that everyone has lost a loved one to COVID-19. The spike in cases continues in Amador County, as well as the state and most of the nation. To go back to January-- I'm sorry-- to go back to July 4th through 10th, during that week, we had 12 cases reported. Our August weekly cases thus far are 156, 139, and 132. This week's totals will be reported in the Public Health Press Release tonight, and it appears that it will be similar to the previous August weekly totals. The Delta strain continues to be the dominant strain circulating in the United States, including in Amador County. 98% of cases in California are the more transmissible Delta variant. Amador contact tracing currently shows widespread community transmission. The majority of confirmed case reports are from exposures to other COVID-positive patients, usually family members, friends, or coworkers. About 20% report knowing that they were in places, in locations, where there were positive cases, but they're not sure who might have transmitted that to them. Another 10% really don't know where or how they were exposed to COVID-19. Being fully vaccinated significantly lowers the risk of infection after exposure, but vaccine breakthrough cases have been occurring, more so with the Delta variant. Over the past few weeks in Amador County, approximately 20% of all positive cases were fully vaccinated. Generally, those who are fully vaccinated, who become infected, have much milder illness. Unvaccinated persons are more likely to experience more severe illness, including hospitalization and death. In the month of August, over 90% of hospitalizations in Amador County have been in unvaccinated individuals. On July 22nd, 27th, the CDC updated the recommendations for fully vaccinated people in areas with high levels of community transmission, which includes Amater County and all of California. Wear a mask when indoors and public places and outdoors where there are crowds where distance can't be maintained. After a close contact exposure to confirmed or suspected COVID-19 case, fully vaccinated persons do not need to quarantine as long as they remain without symptoms. However, these people are advised to get tested three to five days after exposure and to wear a mask around others for 14 days, particularly if you're in indoor public places or you're in crowded outdoor places. Unvaccinated persons are still required by state health officer mandate to wear a mask when indoors in public. Now for a vaccine update. COVID-19 vaccine, over 37,100 doses have been administered to date to persons who live in Amater County. Approximately 68% of Amater County residents aged 12 and over have had at least one dose of vaccine. Almost 50% of Amater residents over the age of 12 are fully vaccinated. It's very important to complete that second dose vaccine of the two-dose series to substantially improve your protection, particularly protection against those variants, the Delta variant primarily. We continue to have vaccine clinics. Upcoming public health COVID-19 vaccine clinics are going to be occurring. We're continuing to hold pop-up outreach clinics. They're walk-in clinics. You do not need an appointment. We offer J&amp;J, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and Moderna for those 18 and over, and Pfizer vaccines for the, those aged 12 and over. If you're between 12 and 17, you will need parental or guardian written permission for the vaccine. We have pop-up vaccine clinics this week. Today, at the Oaks in Jackson Valley Road, from 10 until noon. Tomorrow, September 1st, at Sutter Terrace Mobile Home Park in Sutter Creek, from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And then this Saturday, there will be at Hook in Ione, a vaccine clinic from 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. Our calendar showing those vaccine clinics is available on the amador.gov.org website. Click on the red COVID banner at the top and then hit the vaccine information tab. That will show you where we have vaccines planned this week and on into September. Homebound individuals can still call the Public Health Department to schedule a nurse home visit for vaccination. Call the Public Health Department at 209-223-6407, and our nurse team will schedule the homebound vaccine. Other clinics in Amater County that continue to vaccinate their patients include Sutter Health, WellSpace, and the MACT Clinic. Sutter Health is offering at Sutter Amater Hospital vaccine to patients prior to discharge from the hospital. Several other locations can give patients access to vaccine through their provider, that including Kaiser, Veterans Administration, and other health systems. Many pharmacies in Amater County continue to offer vaccines, and you can go to vaccine.gov to search for availability and for the type of COVID vaccine that's available. Immuno-compromised individuals are eligible for a third dose if their primary series was Pfizer or Moderna. Persons should speak with their doctors regarding the advisability of their dose. Again, these are for immunocompromised people. We're awaiting studies to authorize an additional dose for Jonsen, the J&amp;J vaccine. Those studies are ongoing at this point. Vaccination clearly slows the spread of coronavirus. Fully vaccinated persons have good protection against the variants. All three available COVID vaccines are demonstrating the ability to prevent severe illness. Please get vaccinated if you haven't already to protect yourself, family, your loved ones, and to protect our entire community. Testing is ongoing. The no-cost OptumServe testing site remains open at the back entrance of the Health and Human Services Building off Lower Ridge Road. Current hours are 7 a.m. to 7 p.m., Monday, Wednesday, Saturday. Go to the rear entrance of the building and staff will direct you to the testing area. Please bring your masks to wear. Results are available in two to three days. Please pre-register online at lhicare or call 1-888-634-1123 to register and schedule your appointment. Walk-ins are accepted, however, there may be a delay if the testing site is really busy. Labor Day, this coming Monday is a holiday, and the OptumServe testing site will be closed on Labor Day because of the high volume of testing that's taking place every single day that they're working, the three days per week. We have requested a makeup clinic. So next week, we will have a Optum Serve clinic on Wednesday. The makeup clinic will be Friday, September 10th, and then we will have a clinic the following day, Saturday. Amater Public Health has been involved in the fire response. We support the medical needs of the Red Cross shelters in cooperation with the Amater Air District and Amater County Unified School District for monitoring smoke levels, advising on outdoor activities. We also continue to coordinate with Sutter Amater Hospital on a daily basis. The hospital's been significantly impacted by the number of COVID-19 cases, many of whom were critically ill and in the ICU. And as I mentioned earlier, over 90% of those are unvaccinated. Prior to leaving on vacation, Dr. Kerr asked me to address some influenza COVID-19 comparisons, so comparisons between the flu and COVID-19, as were raised by Supervisor Neto. I apologize, I was out of cell range during the meeting in early August, and I did not hear that conversation. However, I have done a little digging into some of the data. California keeps very detailed influenza data. Flu season is 20 weeks long in California and lasts from late September until late May. During that period from September 2020 through May 2021, in California, there were 50 deaths from influenza, five zero, 50 deaths from influenza. The prior years before masking and before decreased gatherings and before physical distancing, California averaged approximately 700 deaths per year from influenza. In California, during the 18 months of the pandemic, over 65,000 have died because of COVID-19. This data shows that COVID-19 is clearly more dangerous than the flu. I'd like to give sincere thanks at this time for all those in our community who are working on the many significant, significant issues that we face. Our firefighters, our first responders, our law enforcement, the healthcare heroes who've been at this for over 18 months. Our dedicated Amater County Public Health staff who show up seven days a week to work on COVID issues. And our school staff and our school administrators who are keeping our schools open. In conclusion, given the increasing level of community transmission, everyone is advised to wear a mask indoors when in public regardless of your vaccination status. Avoid crowds, avoid poorly ventilated indoor spaces. It's particularly important that anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, stay home, especially if you're waiting for your COVID-19 test results. Please answer the call from public health if you're positive so that we can assist you and your loved ones in guidance on isolation and quarantine. And if you don't feel great, please isolate. Thank you very much. Be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Forster?
Dr. Hartman, thank you for filling in for Dr. Kerr today. Two questions. The first, on your report says that immunocompromised individuals are eligible for the third dose if they had Pfizer or Moderna. What happens if they had Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Supervisor Forster, we're awaiting those studies on Johnson &amp; Johnson. The Pfizer and Moderna vaccines were available earlier, and studies have been done on those that do demonstrate if you're immunocompromised, you do benefit from a third dose. We're hoping to have those same studies available soon on the Moderna dose, but, I'm sorry, on the Johnson &amp; Johnson, but Johnson &amp; Johnson did come out substantially later than the first two. So we don't have enough data yet. We're hoping to get that data from the CDC and the FDA reasonably soon. So it kind of, you know, puts us in a little bit of a squishy situation where we're recommending it for the mRNA vaccines, but not yet for Johnson &amp; Johnson. We do expect that that approval for a third dose for immunocompromised will be forthcoming. We're just not exactly sure when. And we do advise people to talk with their primary care clinicians or their specialists regarding whether they would be eligible for a third dose. The third dose in immunocompromised people is, is for those who have had solid organ transplants, who are actively undergoing cancer chemotherapy, who are on immunosuppressant medications, who are on high doses of prednisone. So there are a number of definite categories of people who qualify for that third dose. Hope that answered it. Ready for a second question, if you are?
Yep. On the advertisements on our local radio station, a physician from Sutter Amater Hospital is encouraging people to get the vaccine, but he says, "I got mine," he doesn't say specifically which one, but he said, "It's, it's the most reliable vaccine we've ever had." That seems to me to be a very tall statement. Is that correct, that, that these vaccines for COVID are the, the most reliable vaccines we've ever had?
I would like to point out that that person who did that PSA is a pediatrician who's intimately involved in vaccinations and has a significant experience not only with vaccinations, in administering vaccinations, but also in teaching in regards to vaccinations in some clinician programs. When you look at the efficacy of the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines, they're 94 to 95% effective. That is extremely effective, more effective than other vaccines. The flu vaccine on an average year, and this bounces around a lot, flu vaccine is 40 to 60% effective. And again, we're, we're over 90%. There are some vaccines, for instance, a homophilus influenza vaccine that, that have significantly decreased the, some very serious meningitis cases in, in infants and young children. It doesn't eliminate them completely, but, but it has done a good job. So, so when, when this physician is saying it is the most effective vaccine, he, he is correct in that. Now, I don't think he meant that the specific vaccine that he received is the most effective. I think he meant that this is the most effective vaccine that we have developed to date. I do know for a fact, because he's a healthcare worker, that he received the Pfizer vaccine because that was the only vaccine that's available early on when we were prioritizing healthcare workers.
Thank you. Are there any other board questions?
Yeah, thank you for getting that information for me, Dr. Hartman. And also, it'd be nice to have information like the number of reactors we have, the shots, like, on that bi-weekly basis. For instance, I was talking to a lady this morning, Jeannie Dever, and you probably know her.
I do.
She's telling me that her brother's daughter, I guess quite the athlete, got a full ride scholarship to, I believe it was University of Hawaii. And without the parents' permission, or I should say, no, the girl's probably of age, she went and got the, got the vaccination. And two days later, her father was watching her at a game or practice and noticed she wasn't playing quite right. And so he went down, asked her, she's feeling okay, and he felt her, I guess she was really cold. So he took her immediately to emergency room, and she spent 30 hours in intensive care. Now, the doctor said he was not going to put it down as a vaccine reaction, but the family is very, very upset about what went on. So it's just, it's a concern I have. If people want to get the vaccine, I have no problem with that. I, I just like to have all the cards on the table.
Appreciate that, Supervisor Neto. Unfortunately, we, we don't have data at this point at that granular level, at the level you're talking about. Could we go back to the last two weeks and look at the United States or in California, or even in Amater County, how many people had a reaction to the vaccine? There is a system called the VAERS system, it's a vaccine adverse events system that whereby we report any significant interaction, side effect to the CDC, goes to the FDA. It's, it's a voluntary reporting system, so not everyone does it. We try to, when we hear about those here at public health, we do our best to make sure that either the clinician who's taking care of that person or we go ahead and submit a VAERS report. It's difficult to get that VAERS data in a timely fashion. We will get it eventually. Having said that, there are over 160 million people in the United States who have been vaccinated, and the number of adverse reactions is minimal. It's a very small fraction. There's no vaccine that's totally devoid of adverse reactions. And the coronavirus, the COVID-19 vaccine, is not totally devoid of side effects and reactions. However, given the overall high mortality that we've seen in the United States and in California, over 65,000 people dying of COVID-19 disease, we, you know, it clearly, the scales tip in favor of vaccination. It is unfortunate when people do have side effects. We wish we could predict which people would get side effects and proactively do something about that. Fortunately, the overwhelming majority of the side effects are, people have recovered promptly. There have been more serious ones, and they, they, they are exceedingly rare. But thank you for bringing that up. But I can't, I can't get to that week-to-week report. I'm sorry about that.
Yes, there's no way to really, you don't really hear, there's no way to get the number of reactors in this county that we hear. So it basically goes to VAERS system. There's no way to pull up the information.
No, there, there, there's no way for us to, in any timely fashion, pull that information out of VAERS. That the CDC and FDA collate that information, but it's, to be honest, it's not, not available on a timely basis. If we, you know, if we hear serious reactions, we do investigate that. I was talking with a physician over the weekend who did talk about a patient of his who had a neurologic reaction, which again, very rare. However, I could not get data because that patient lives in another county, you know, so it's, even though we're, we're in the land of Silicon Valley, our, our data systems do leave some gaps for us. I apologize for that.
Any other board questions? I guess, Dr. Hartman, I have a kind of a question, comment. I don't know if you have the answer, but it's kind of a two-parter, so bear with me. I know that the, the J&amp;J vaccine is a single shot, and the question was raised, is the, you know, should any immunocompromised people receive that? I know that they published recently that a second shot greatly improves your resistance to being, being infected. Having said that, that makes sense that having the booster would help the immunocompromised. I know they haven't necessarily looked at that population in a detailed study. But the next question really, or comment, is has anybody really looked at the breakdown of breakthrough cases based on the type of vaccine they received? You know, is it more frequent with Moderna, Pfizer, or Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is just a single shot? And when they gave a booster, it, it improved the resistance by, by ten, tenfold, I think.
You're absolutely right that the preliminary studies on J&amp;J, the second dose, has improved the protection. We can't use that off-label, so we need to wait for the FDA approval to do a second dose. In an immunocompromised person, this has been, again, much better studied than the earlier ones, the Pfizer and Moderna. Let's take organ transplant patients. After organ transplant patients were fully vaccinated with one of those mRNA vaccines, their level of protection was 18%. Your average healthy, you and me, our protection, 94 to 95. Your average healthy, you and me, our protection, ninety four to ninety five percent. So they took those solid organ transplant persons who got Moderna and Pfizer, gave them a third dose. And that third dose increased their protection from eighteen percent to fifty four percent, a significant increase. And an increase that made the FDA say it is worthwhile to do a third dose in immunocompromised people. Again, Johnson and Johnson studies are lagging behind. Another study, and I kind of thought you were going to ask about this, is that there's been the question that if someone got a Johnson and Johnson the first time around, should they get an mRNA vaccine the second time around? And again, that is being studied to see if a different type of vaccine would give a higher immune boost. Again, Supervisor Chairman Axe, we expect information on that to be forthcoming, and I wish I could give you an answer today on the Johnson and Johnson. But we do think that that's coming relatively soon. Your breakdown question about, your question about the breakdown, which vaccines seem to be having more breakthrough cases. There, the data is still showing that all three vaccines are roughly eighty percent or or higher, you know, more effective. The, so so we don't, again, we don't have precise data. Public Health Department at the state level started giving us a little bit of that data just about a week ago in a very preliminary fashion. So, you know, perhaps that would be something that we could report on in September in in more detail or include in one of our press briefs when we do get more definitive information on that. So we know, we know now that 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 all three vaccines do a good job of keeping you from getting serious illness, from keep you from arriving in the hospital and keep you from dying from COVID nineteen.
Thank you. Yeah, just just something to keep an eye on. I'll open it up to the the public. Is there any public questions?
Supervisor Crew first.
Oh, Supervisor Crew, did you, did you have a question?
Dr. Hartman, yes. My only, I know we went to the pop up because we had the low hanging fruit in the first part of the vaccination. And I know there's more testing being done. Are we getting a greater percentage of vaccinations in the pop up clinics?
Excellent, excellent questions. Excellent question, Supervisor Crew. Actually, we are. The numbers, when you compare them to our mass vaccination clinic, seem to be smaller. But in these clinics, we have one or two nurses and administrative staff that go out. And at some of the clinics, they have been doing high twenties to high thirties in terms of the numbers of vaccines. Whereas before the predominance of Delta, those numbers were less than half that. So we have seen an uptick. There have been an uptick in vaccination at other locations. Sutter Health is offering them on Fridays at their suite five. It's by appointment and by order from your clinician. And they have seen an uptick in their vaccine usage. So we we track this on a regular basis. Boy, we're inching up, slowly inching up. It's hard to give you exact figures. Notice that said approximately fifty percent fully vaccinated. We get data from about three different sources. Some of the data includes the federal allocations, some of the data doesn't. Some is based on total population, you know, zero and up. And I tend not to agree with that because you're only eligible for vaccine if you're twelve and up. So those numbers fluctuate a little bit, but it is safe to say that we are increasing the number of people who are who are vaccinated, which is just really heartening to see that people are coming out to our pop up walk-in clinics.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Does anybody want to ask any questions at this time? Are there any people on Zoom raising their hands? Okay, any last board questions?
Just one more. Dr. Hartman, Supervisor Forrester. Those people that are immunocompromised already, let's say they've just been diagnosed with cancer, are they eligible? Is it recommended they get the shot?
It is recommended. It's recommended either that they start the series if they're not vaccinated at this point, or that if they have been vaccinated with an mRNA vaccine, that they get the third dose. We have begun in our pop up clinics administering the third dose. You do not need a note from your clinician, but it is advised that you talk with your physician or nurse practitioner or physician's assistant about that. We have what we call a self attestation sheet. You just check a box that says, you know, I attest that I have an immunocompromised condition and sign it, and then we give the vaccine. You do not need a note from your clinician.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'd like to thank you, Dr. Hartman, for your presentation today. It's been very helpful. Thank you. And all of the staff over at Public Health and all the work you're doing. It's it's really fantastic and, you know, much needed. And, you know, again, thank you for all you do.
And thank you, thank you, board members, for your support. You know, we 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 get through this together. We will get through it. It's very, very challenging, but thank you for your support.
All right, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to item five B. This is a resolution from Behavioral Health declaring September twenty twenty one as National Suicide Prevention Month and September tenth as World Suicide Prevention Day. And I believe Stephanie Hess from Health and Human Services is going to come up and address the board. Some of the other folks.
A couple of us from the Suicide Prevention Coalition here today.
Yes.
Yeah, so thanks for letting us be here. I'm Stephanie. I work for Amador County Behavioral Health. And September is Suicide Prevention Month, and Suicide Prevention Week starts this Sunday, September fourth, and goes through September eleventh. And next Friday, September tenth, is World Suicide Prevention Day. So throughout the month, individuals and organizations across the country join their voices to provide awareness around the fact that suicide is preventable. Suicide does not discriminate. All ages, stages, rich and poor, are affected by suicide in our community. And we have to work together to spread awareness, provide education, and promote activities that instill resiliency and offer hope in our community. This year's theme for Suicide Prevention Month is supportive transitions, using the motto reconnect, reenter, and rebuild. And I'm just going to read you the message that comes from that, that we're using statewide this year. It is, transition can be conceptualized as an event or a series of events that cause fundamental changes in the fabric of our daily life, what people do, where they do it, and with whom. Transitions in any shape or size, expected or unexpected, welcome or not welcome, can be unsettling, disorienting, and stressful. They can impact our mental health, and major life changes have long been understood to be environmental risk factors for suicide. Positive coping skills, resilience, and connectedness to family, friends, and our community can act as protective factors to help us navigate these transitions. While the pandemic has changed our fabric of our life, it has also strengthened our resilience and resolve. As we reenter normal life, whether it is going back to school, reconnecting with friends, rediscovering our favorite places, or reimagining our future, transitions are easier when we navigate them together. Remember, all of us can play a role in suicide prevention, and together we can reconnect, reenter, and rebuild. So this year, we want you to look in the local paper for articles on suicide prevention. Listen to the local radio station. They are airing our public service announcements targeted to different ages and groups. An intended event that supports mental health and suicide prevention, namely our third annual Heart of Hope Art Show, which will be, it's going right now, Monday through Friday, at Amador Arts, from one to four at the Amador Senior Center. And we're having a closing reception on World Suicide Prevention Day from three to five at Amador Arts to honor the folks that submitted art and to raise awareness around mental health and suicide prevention in our community. We also would like you to get involved in efforts for suicide prevention by attending an Amador Speaks meeting. Amador Speaks stands for Suicide Prevention, Education, Awareness, Knowledge, and Support. And it's our local Suicide Prevention Coalition, and we meet monthly on the third Thursday of the month at three thirty via Zoom. If you want more information on this, you can contact me. And we passed out some items, but I'm going to stop talking now and pass it over to Ken Baldwin here, who's going to say something.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you guys today. My name is Ken Baldwin. I'm a contractor with Amador County Behavioral Health. Specifically, I conduct suicide prevention program called QPR, Question, Persuade, Refer. And the main aspect of QPR is if you see something, say something. If you see somebody in emotional distress, talk to them, start the conversation. And that's why Amador Speaks is such a great organization, because we talk about it. We talk about depression, we talk about suicide. The reason that I got into this was because my whole adult life, I've dealt with depression and suicidal ideation. This came to a head in nineteen eighty three. I tried to kill myself. And with the stigma of my depression and my actions, I stopped talking about it. I didn't talk about it. I didn't want anybody to know what had happened. I was so afraid of what they were going to say to me about who I was. And that was disturbing to me. This led me to basically try again. In nineteen eighty five, I found myself on the Golden Gate Bridge. I jumped because I couldn't handle who I was. While I was in the hospital, I finally decided, I'm not going to hide who I am. I'm going to talk about this. And for the last thirty six years, I've talked about who I am and what I am. And I talk about depression, and I talk about suicide. I'm not going to let the stigma take me and make me afraid of who I am. And that's why we talk about this, to let other people know that they're not alone. And to let them know that if they talk about it, if they ask for help, they can get the help they need. And that's really important, is to have them understand that there is help out there. And that's why we're doing this. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks for sharing your your experiences, your personal experiences with us. We have a resolution. Should we read that into the record?
I would say what Mr. Baldwin said was very profound and a good message for people.
Sure.
The the QPR that we have for Behavioral Health, it's a free organization. It's a free, a free presentation. It's open to the community, and all you have to do is call Behavioral Health, ask for Gail Abbott, and find out when the next presentation is. It's open to the public. So if you're interested in it, please contact Gail Abbott at Behavioral Health. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you again. I'll just read the resolution, recognizing the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Month and September tenth as twenty twenty one as World Suicide Prevention Day. Whereas the month of September is National Suicide Prevention Month, a time in which individuals, organizations, and communities around the around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas the past year has presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that, expected or unexpected, welcome or not, can be unsettling, disoriented, and stressful. And whereas the pandemic has changed our fabric of life and major life changes our our environmental risk factors for suicide. And whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate with someone they they are concerned about, and reaching out to local or local resources. And whereas we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for the future. And whereas all Californians are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. And whereas the month of September, recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Month, provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide, how to reach out to those experiencing an emotional crisis, and connect to resources. And therefore, be it resolved by Amador Speaks and by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amador, that said board does hereby approve that the month of September be declared Suicide Prevention Month and that the day of September tenth be declared World Suicide Prevention Day. So with that, I will entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Supervisor Brown and a second by Supervisor Forrester. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew? Okay, Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. Aye.
There we go.
I don't know how I got muted. I don't know.
Okay, did we have any public comments? Anybody on Zoom? All right. Any board members comment? All right. All right, so we're going to move on to item, excuse me, five C. This is Aging and Disability Resource Connection and presentation by Chris McCoy of ADRC, or who is the ADRC coordinator regarding the newly released Motherload Resource Directory. And Chris is online? Okay, great.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors and public attendees. My name is Chris McCoy, and I am the ADRC Coordinator for Area Twelve Agency on Aging. Area Twelve Agency on Aging and the Disability Resource Agency for Independent Living, otherwise known as DRAIL, have partnered to develop an Emerging Aging and Disability Resource Connection, an ADRC. It's called ADRC of the Motherload. The Emerging ADRC of the Motherload will create a network of organizations that will engage in person and family-centered planning and provide responsive and comprehensive information about referrals for long-term supports and services. The information received will be, will enable people with disabilities, older adults, and their families to make informed choices regarding the supports needed to live with dignity in their home and be fully included in their communities for as long as possible. Our Emerging ADRC of the Motherload is very excited to announce that we have developed a new online resource directory, which I am trying to share with you right at the moment. But it is apparently. Let's try that again. I'm not sure if you're seeing that. Are you guys seeing a screen with three pictures and some icons?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this is what our new resource directory looks like. Now, let me scroll down a little bit. You'll see some icons there, different icons like foods, the resources, transportation, housing, things of that nature. But let me do this. I'm going to scroll all the way to the bottom, and I'm going to type in Amador. And we're going to see what it shows us. So as you can see, the very first one that pops up is the Amador Senior Center. It pulls up a lot of different reference surfaces and providers in Amador County, Interfaith Food Bank, the Amador County Veteran Services, things of that nature. If you actually click on one of them, let's click on the Amador Senior Center. It will take you to a new screen. And then click on About This Provider, and it gives you a full description of all the things that are available with that senior center. Things like their wags and whiskers, their home maintenance safety modifications, things of that nature. It also provides the phone number right here, and you can even click onto their webpage and go straight to their webpage. So just kind of a brief overview of what our resource directory looks like. And I have provided you with a screenshot of that, as well as the address at the bottom of that screenshot. The other handouts that you also received have to do with a few pages just describing what an ADRC is. Now, I do want you to know, we are currently in the designation process for the state of California. Once we are designated as an ADRC, then I would definitely like to come back and give you a full presentation about our whole ADRC program. With that, um, I thank you for this opportunity.
Uh, any questions from the board? Uh, Chris, I have a question. So, um, how would somebody access this website that you're showing?
So of course the address is at the bottom of the handout that you guys have. We have also been providing flyers across all the counties. Uh, we also have a, a link available from our webpage at Area Twelve Agency on Aging. So you can go to the Area Twelve webpage and click right on the resource link. Um, we've been doing radio ads. We've been doing everything we can to get this out there.
Right. Yeah. That, that's what, um, I, you know, if I can refer somebody, I'd refer them to, to the Area Twelve page or, um, go look up the link there and then, um, that's great.
Yep. It's linked right directly from our webpage, so it'll take them right there.
Okay. And, uh, any other board questions or comments?
I, just one comment. I, I think this is really important because of the one statement they make here that for people trying to, uh, negotiate their way through the maze of long-term services and supports, that's exactly right. I've, uh, had to deal with, with, uh, some of these situations with my family, but I've seen other people too, that it's, it's like trying to deal with, uh, Medicare or Medi-Cal. It's, it's almost impossible unless people know, have an advocate that will help them negotiate their way through the, the system.
That is exactly what this ADRC is about.
Well, thank you.
Do we have any, uh, public comment? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Well, Chris, uh, I'd like to thank you for your time and your presentation today and, uh, we'll be in touch. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You guys have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to item five D, the, um, Buena Vista Landfill Projects and State Revolving Loan Fund, um, SRF Financing Presentation and, uh, our Solid Ways Manager, Jeff, is coming up.
Good morning.
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 Thank you for having us. After all the presentations on all the serious stuff going on in the county, we're going to lighten it up here where they talk about our landfill progress and where we're going with our two projects. I have our preeminent landfill engineer, Mr. Kurt Fuji here to give a presentation. We're going to keep it light. We, uh, have some pictures, have, uh, a little information on where we're at in the process. Uh, we do have a better estimate on funds and costs and, uh, how we're going to handle that. And we are moving forward with SRF. Uh, but I will let Kurt go forward with the presentation, then I'll answer any questions afterwards.
Thank you. I'm Kurt Fuji, uh, the county's solid way, landfill consulting engineer.
This is you again?
Yes. Before I get into this, uh, I do want to say it's, it's always a pleasure to come up to Amador County and I, I'm particularly thankful to be here today. I, I may have mentioned to some of you, I used to work for local government back in the seventies and eighties, the dark ages. I worked for a city. Uh, we didn't have anything like the fires or the pandemic to deal with. So it's, uh, reassuring to see that, you know, our, our, our government is working and that local, to see government, local government responding in a locally appropriate way to such dire circumstances. So I thank you for letting me see that today. So with that, um, I'll get into the presentation. Buena Vista Landfill Projects, uh, the project site, which we've seen before, we have the phase one outlined in red on top and then phase two, three, and then the dark area to the right is, uh, the surface impoundment that is used to evaporate leachate. Uh, next slide. Background, Buena Vista Landfill consists of three units, as we've mentioned, phase one, phase two and three, and the leachate pond. As we've mentioned before here, the Regional Water Quality Control Board believes that the phase one final cover has failed and has directed the county to repair that. They are also requiring the county to increase the capacity in the evaporation pond and they suspect that the pond liner is leaking. So we are replacing that. Next slide. Current status, uh, phase one final cover design is essentially complete. We're just waiting for agency comments on that design. Uh, so we won't cover that anymore. We won't discuss the, uh, next four items a little bit more. And the leachate evaporation pond, we need to resolve liner design questions with the regional board. Uh, we've come up with some new project components or issues as we've progressed down this path. Uh, with regard to the schedule, we are planning for twenty-twenty-two construction and funding. As Jeff has mentioned, this has been approved for funding through the state revolving fund, which I think is quite an accomplishment on the county's part. Uh, Jeff has mentioned in the memorandum that it's the first landfill project that was approved for this. So hats off to Amador County for getting this done. Uh, leachate evaporation pond liner design questions. The regulations require a double liner, basically a plastic liner over a clay liner. The current design drawings did not show that specifically, but we're planning to construct a two and a half foot vertical expansion. That's the area where the regional board said, oh, you need a double liner here. We have a double liner on the existing pond that said you're raising it two and a half feet, you need a double liner there. We're planning to use onsite ion clay for that berm. Ion clay, as everyone here I'm sure knows, is a very tight, uh, tight naturally occurring clay. So the clay will function as a CCL, a compacted clay liner. So we don't have to do anything other than explain to the regional board what we plan to do to meet their double liner requirement. Uh, we might have one question there, regulations are not consistent and we may need the Regional Water Quality Control Board to approve an engineered alternative for the permeability of the onsite clay. They require, well, they either require ten to the minus six centimeters per second or ten to the minus seven centimeters per second. There are two different, there's a table and a, and a figure in title twenty-seven. One shows one, one shows the other. And depending on if the ten to the minus seven, uh, requirement is deemed to be, to prevail over the one times ten to the minus six, then we will need an engineered alternative for that. And we think that would not be an issue. Next slide.
The, um, stop you just so we don't lose track. You received preliminary feedback from the Enforcement Division. His, um, concern was that he couldn't see the double liner. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that issue should be mitigated then?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, the reason we don't anticipate any issues on the permeability is that if you look on this, I won't go into all the details, but I'll draw your attention to the two horizontal lines. The top one, which is only half a foot, six inches above the existing liner, is the highest projected water level. If we get the worst rain winter on record on top of a one thousand year storm or a hundred year storm. And that's only six inches above the existing double liner. And that will only be there for a very short time. The second blue line is, um, a more normal maximum here. So the, uh, the regulations require the double liner, but it won't even, it won't see liquid.
What's the, what's the regulated freeboard? That's a reliable freeboard?
Two feet. We are required to maintain two feet. That's why we're raising it two and a half feet, two feet above the highest wa, liquid level anyone could imagine, using the very worst year with the worst storm.
That's a thousand year flood, thousand year storm year?
Uh, the year is the worst year on record, which I think might exceed the statistical thousand year year. It was, I forget, sixteen, eighteen, eighteen, seventeen, something.
As long as we meet that, because what we were told normally it's a, it's a hundred year flood year or rain year. And then they now require a thousand year. Is that correct?
Right. The thousand year is for a class two facility and the, the pond is class two. Um, but the regional board, I did kind of go a little bit beyond that because they said, okay, you ran out of capacity and you had to pump. So regardless of what calculations or models may say, you need to expand it. So take a look at that worst year you've ever experienced and the worst storm or the worst statistical storm that we can come up with and design for that. Hope that answers your question.
It does. It doesn't mean I agree with it.
Well, when I said local government responding to, I was going to say people have different perspectives on issues and that's, I think, the way our government is supposed to work. So, yeah.
As long as they're holding everybody else to that thousand year standard.
I think they are hold, from what I have heard, talking to other people, they are holding everybody else to the highest standard they can come up with. This ultra-conservative approach is not being directed solely at Amador County.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah. It's region-wide.
Thank you.
Uh, next slide. Um, we have some new components or issues that have come up. Ongoing maintenance on the systems out there have indicated that we should replace the water meter. We meter the water that, um, as part of corrective action, we pump out or withdraw impacted groundwater and send it to the pond. That water meter is old. It's, uh, it needs some, it needs to be replaced because accurate monitoring and measuring are essential to, um, doing proper corrective action and proper post-closure operations and maintenance. Um, the county must remove sediment in the evaporation pond to replace the liner. We've got some photos of that later. The previous disposal option was to send the sediment to Kiefer Landfill in Sacramento County as regular refuse. Uh, we've spoken with the people at Kiefer now. I guess they've had some staff changes and they are indicating that they might view that or actually they, their regional board staff people, I think is sort of reading between the lines and their communications, might view the sediment as a class two material that they cannot accept. So costs for sediment removal, our estimated costs are higher than what we've seen in the past for that reason. And removing and replacing the buried landfill gas pipes and leachate pipes may be more expensive than we anticipated. We don't have surveyed as-bills of those systems. We found some sort of hand-drawn sketches. If those are at all accurate, we may have more there. And there are potential health and safety concerns in removing those. A few years back, we might not have worried so much, but some years back, some people in, working in a landfill gas trench in final cover like these died from an oxygen deficient atmosphere and no one could figure out why that happened. The trench is shallow. It's maybe at most waist deep, but people working in there somehow, um, it created an oxygen deficient atmosphere and people died. So there will be more health and safety, um, concerns and costs associated with that. Here's what the evaporation pond looks like now. It is very, very dry. Water levels are very low. This was August twenty-fourth. All the white stuff is the sediment we need to re, remove. Another cost factor there is that in the past CYA forces were used to remove it at basically no cost for the labor with, uh, plastic snow shovels so they wouldn't damage the liner. That's not an option now, so we'll have to contract out for removal of the sludge, of the sediment. And next photo, we've just got a few more of the pond. It is, it is very dry. We've been able to bring it down. So I think if we can just.
No question on that.
Uh-huh.
Says you may not be able to get it done in time. If we, we, it's about the driest time you've had. So I mean, it's kind of like it's, we should really be working hard trying to be able to get that contract out and get it done while, I mean, you're not getting any drier than, than it is right now.
Uh, I, I think, yes, we agree.
Jeff, Jeff questioned, but I mean, it's something that two of you need to work on.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to, Jim?
We are, I, I have a, one of the things, one of the issues is, um, the state, uh, revolving fund, uh, the money, uh, some of it's state money, some of it is federal money, but we are held to the procurement standards, uh, I believe of the federal government. So that's three bids and the whole process, uh, to go through. So we're going to see if we can mitigate or, or, or find our way through that in the next, because it's going to probably take about, um, at least two weeks to, to clean that thing out. It's the first, it's almost first September tomorrow. Um, we would have to get it done. I don't know. Well, I'm going to see, it usually takes six to eight weeks at least to go through our GSA process. We'll see if we can speed that up.
And my question is if we miss this opportunity, we, we get a wet year, we, we're getting construction by twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Correct. So we would, yeah, we, we would, what, what's going to happen is we'll end up pumping more water. That's the cheapest thing we do, however. That's only sixty cents a gallon. Uh, so if we have to reduce, uh, you know, get, get that thing, get the water emptied out and let it dry out a little. Um, next year we can still, we can still put it in the dumps and, and let it dry out some more. It would be ideal to, to at least get some of that out of there this year though.
If we haul it out though, do we get notices of violation and penalties from the state?
I, I think we could head that off if we mention it as, um, we're not hauling it out. Make sure they understand, we're not hauling it offsite because we're out of capacity. We're hauling it offsite because we need to get it out of there to do what you want us to do. I would hope they'd understand it.
You can hope.
Next slide. I'll also mention too, all along we have understood and we've told everybody that the pond work will happen late in the year because we do need as much summertime as we can. So we hadn't planned on starting this part of a project until say September. And it could be, should be, it's not that difficult and we should be able to complete it before winter rains start. All right. Excellent. Uh, schedule, as has been mentioned, the work is proposed for the twenty-twenty-two construction season. Uh, there are a number of reasons for that. Funding will not be available in time for this year, obviously, and, uh, the Regional Water Quality Control Board approval will not occur, occur in time for this year. So a number of factors have pushed the work back. Next slide. Funding. Project has been approved for funding through the state revolving fund. Again, hats off to Amador County for accomplishing that. The county is providing the final information required by the state and working on finalizing a contract for funding. And the county must provide sixteen point six, seven percent matching funds. And here is a more detailed, uh, breakout of the cost. The next slide contains some notes. I'll sort of go into that while we've got the numbers in front of us. Okay. The, uh, construction consists of the final cover replacement, repair and replacement, the pond expansion, uh, sediment removal, landfill gas work and, uh, putting in the two new water meters. Those are the biggest pieces. Uh, the biggest, um, changes there have come about, as we've said, are related to the, we have higher costs, higher than originally anticipated costs to remove the sediment and dispose of it and to, uh, do remove and replace the landfill gas and leachate piping. Change orders, ten percent, uh, approximately ten percent of construction cost. Design is what we've, what the contract that the county awarded earlier, plus some estimates for additional work to address the water board concerns or questions about the design. And, um, construction management and construction quality assurance are estimates fro, from our designers and, uh, administration, two percent of overall project costs. Other costs are the biological survey that we'll have to do pre-construction.
What is that for?
Uh, sensitive.
I know it's for, but why, I mean, this is a dump out there. It's a landfill. Um, it's been pretty well dug up, graded.
I agree with you. Um, it's one of the requirements for the state revolving fund. It's one of their criteria. Have you done a bi, uh, in terms of SEQA and NEPA compliance? One of their questions is have you done a biological survey? They were not going to give us full points for that until Jeff and I said, wait a minute, if we're doing the work in twelve to eighteen months, don't, shouldn't we do that before construction so that nothing new can come in? And they saw that and I think they gave us full points, nearly full points on that. Uh, next, any other questions? Next slide. These are just the notes that I went through. Next slide. We have a funding comparison. Another funding mechanism that we looked at was a USDA loan. So for comparison purposes, the following slide shows an analysis of what the cost would be if we borrowed money from USDA with an interest rate of two point six percent. Total payments are about five point three million dollars. Total payments are about five-point-three million dollars. Next slide. Jeff, the accountant, prepared this. If you have any questions on this one, I'm going to sidestep them for Jeff. I'll let Jeff answer. Next slide. Funding comparison, uh, for the state revolving fund. Again, it provides significant savings. We got an anticipated rate of three-point-one percent. Total payments of about four-point-two percent. So Amador County will save over one million dollars over the life of the debt service using this fund. And again, I, I am very impressed that Jeff thought of do, going after this. Next slide. Again, similar to the first one. The accountant, Jeff the accountant, prepared this. I have looked at it. It's pretty impressive. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, that's it. Okay. Any other, any other questions?
Any, uh, board questions, comments? Um, do we have any public comment? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Did you want to say anything, Jeff?
No, I think, uh, we're gonna, after this, I told the, the team from SRF that I would formalize and upload the information into their FAST system, and they're already moving forward. They, they also did provide us a cultural study. The state offered to and completed that themselves. It is, uh, last I heard, he was finalizing it, but that was another component we had to get done that we didn't have the opportunity to get done, and they offered to do for us. Uh, so that was a, a nice bonus that they gave us there. Other than that, we're just, uh, they anticipate, uh, at least three months ago, they anticipated contracts being written sometime probably in October. Uh, we can do work prior to, uh, getting the contract on stuff we've outlined. Uh, the sludge removal would, uh, qualify for that, but we need to make sure we go through the proper process to do that.
So with respect to the sludge removal, we're gonna remove the sludge, but we really can't rebuild the pond until twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Correct.
So we're going to have to probably do a similar.
Well, we'll get a jump on.
Catch-up or cleanup?
Yeah, there's, we're gonna have to do a final, final cleanup of that anyway, w- once. Uh, there can be a little bit of sludge left in there, but there's, there's a good eight, eight to twelve inches in there right now.
Okay, so, well, we'll probably have to get rid of water, contaminated water and everything.
We will.
In the spring.
The contaminated water, I think when we, when we got rid of that last time, we, we took it down to Elf Grove. Uh, to the regional, regional sanitation plant down there, uh, which, which was a pretty smooth operation. I think, uh, if we can get the water pumped out, I mean, ideally, what I would like to have done was pump the, the water that's left in there out, let that dry out a little, and try and get all that sludge out of there as much as we could this year. We'll still, we'll still have to see, um, you know, how much dry season we have and, and how quickly we can get to the process to try and do that.
I think that'd be a good move, get it done sooner rather than later, if possible.
It, it definitely will be, so.
So, uh, to remove the sludge, we don't need, um, any of the state revolving fund to pay for that?
Well, we would, uh, part, part of it, part of it will be, if the contracts aren't written, they, they will not, we have the resolutions in place to repay us for money we put out in advance. So that would, that would be a cost that the county, uh, would have to fund upfront, and then they would pay us back.
Okay.
Uh, we do have money in our, we have collected, uh, over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in that CIP fund right now. Uh, so, and we're collecting, we anticipate about two seventy over this year. So we are, we are, we do have cash flow in, in our fund in that, uh, one-eight-one-zero-zero.
But it's okay to spend the money upfront now and we're, it won't prohibit us from.
We do have, we do have the, the proper, the proper stuff in place to, to allow us to do that, yeah.
Great.
As long as we follow all the, the, the process, the proper process to do it.
Right, of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
They don't make it easy.
Well, that's why we have you doing the job. Okay, um, any, uh, other board questions or comments for either, uh, Jeff or Kurt?
Oh, just, I just wanted to acknowledge the county planning department, too, and that incident that I mentioned about the bio survey. We said county planning knows the potential, uh, sensitive species that might be out there. So they prepared a report saying, here's what could be out there. Here's what we'll check for. And that's what got us the full point of scar on that issue. So great work by county.
Well, thank you. Thanks for pointing that out. Okay, well, if there are no further questions or comments or public comment, let's move on to item five E.
Uh, we have a public hearing at ten-thirty.
Oh, we do, right. Okay, let's move to the public hearing and, uh, item six A, and, um, this is going to be Pioneer Water Rehabilitation Project Phase Two, and this is a public hearing for the purpose of soliciting citizens' views to consider submission of a community development bro, block grant, CDBG, closeout certification for the subject project to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and approve for, of that form. Improvement of that, approval of that form. And, uh, we have, uh, Rich Farrington and, uh, Rick. Larry, right. You wanna tee this up for, uh, Rich?
Yeah, good morning. I'm Rich Farrington, District Three Director of Amador Water Agency. And here with me is Larry McKinney, our general manager. Speaking for the agency, we want to thank you for partnering with AWA on this CDBG grant for phase two of this construction of this project, three phases, Pioneer Water Rehabilitation Project to eliminate a health hazard to the up-country public water system and improve fire protection. The project benefits about fifteen-hundred-and-six residents, of which seventy-one percent are low and moderate income. One of the residents who ran out of water during the fire between Carson and Pioneer Creek Roads a few years ago thanked us for this project. It connects the water loss, it corrects the water loss problems by eliminating three-inch and four-inch bottlenecks in the water main on, um, at Buckhorn Ridge Road. The State Division of Drinking Water supported this project, and the grant saying in their letter, quote, "Contaminated water containing pathogens may enter the public water system siphoned from individual homes or businesses during the low or no-pressure events for firefighting and incident fire hydrant use for flushing construction water and routine, routine drinking water demand, thus putting the public health at risk in violation of state drinking water standards." "We would not have been able to fund the required three phases of this project without your, uh, support." "You may recall that we partnered with you in twenty-fourteen on phase one to replace about a quarter mile of this water main." "In that, in this project, we were lucky that the state increased the maximum grant, so in twenty-seventeen, we could do about three-quarters of the project." "The last phase, phase three, is currently underway with a grant and loan from U.S. Department of Agriculture to replace the remaining water main and replace the two old water tanks serving thirty-five-hundred customer connections up country." "That's a population of about eight thousand people." "The tank roof supports are failing in those core water tanks that serve this area and could collapse in the winter due to snow load." "AWA is not eligible to apply directly for this type of grant, and that is why we really appreciate partnering with the county on this grant opportunity for great benefit to the affected citizens." "I support approving the closeout certification, and thank you again."
Thanks, Rich. So, um, have we opened the public hearing, or should we do that now? Okay. Do we have any questions for Rich? Did you want to say anything, Larry?
Uh, thank you. I'm just here to answer any questions you have.
Okay.
I guess we, we never really, uh, Mr. Ely, we never really got, uh, the road, the road paved all the way across. It's only gonna be half-paved, correct?
Correct. It's gonna remain like it is.
I, I think in the future, if there are future projects, we need to clarify that before the project ever happens.
But if I could just comment that, uh, we were concerned that the cost could exceed the dollars maximum that was available. And so we were looking, uh, at least I was really looking at a conservative approach to make sure that we could replace the water main and, and make, and, and, you know, replace the pavement of that particular lane. And so, you know, that's wanting to get this project.
Good for the pipeline, but not for the road. And the residents that have to thrive on it, and the county that has to upkeep it from now on.
And this money was available to finish the project, but you, your operation decided not to finish it out to assist the county, and we very much do not appreciate that. Well, there's.
I'm not, I'm not gonna say ma, ma, nothing because that'd probably, that'd probably not be nice. So I'll keep my mouth shut, but I'm not happy.
Well, I, I hope this hasn't affected our relationship. Um, I, I think, I think that, uh, at least from my perspective, we wanted to get the, the water project accomplished with a health hazard, and we wanted to be squeaky-clean to make sure that it didn't jeopardi, anything didn't jeopardize the county, you know, the county's ability to apply for future grants. So.
You should have let us make that decision.
Well, I think we've learned some lessons, and, uh, I, I think um, going forward, uh, the new general manager, um.
I think the main lesson should be that if you're gonna partner with somebody, maybe we should be working together um, on, on the issues and not fighting each other on something as simple as getting the road paved when we, when we felt there was enough money to complete the project and the paving.
Absolutely agree. Uh, I think that's, uh, what we were trying to do. Um, I don't think that we ever intended not to partner and collaborate on this project. I know I came into it late. Um, I, I've been here one year. I can still use that excuse for another two months, right? That I got here after this had already started. But, um, I will say that proactively, looking forward, uh, Chuck Ely and I are meeting regularly, trying to make sure that we are collaborating, that we are talking, uh, proactively looking at infrastructure projects going forward and how we can make them mutually beneficial. I certainly learned some lessons about how this CDBG grant program process is, is fairly cumbersome at the end of a project when you're trying to make adjustments. And I think that Chuck and I worked closely with Terry Cox as the consultant to figure out what we thought everybody could do without exposing ourselves, either agency, to liability and future audits. And I do believe that ultimately, the final decision not to proceed with additional road paving was the county's decision.
Well, I, I don't.
I will, I will say that it was the county's decision based on what had been done by internal AWA staff, that you had, um, and we, we don't need to air this all out right now, but, um, I would like to have things run out differently.
Now, we talked about it earlier, and after a project is done, there's an, there's an audit. And if the recommendation from your staff was to only pave half the road, then that would be picked up in the audit, and if the, the full road was paved, the other half would probably be disallowed, if not the whole amount.
That was our concern, and there were multiple audits. So one of the lessons we've learned for this type of grant project is how to make sure that we scope a project as broadly as we can. It's easier to cut things up and to add things in at the end. So I think we've learned that lesson.
I hope so. Thank you.
So, I guess my question is, uh, is there some need for follow-up here on, uh, making sure our, our relationship is not damaged?
Well, it's kind of about like the forest. Once it gets burned, it's kind of burnt.
Yeah, but, uh, you, you can thin out the forest, and you can see that the fires can burn safely.
I screened for years, we need, we need to forest management, and, and we talked about this some, and same, same results of forest.
Okay, is there any, uh, public comment on this?
Good morning again, Sean Michael Krilicich. And, um, just par for the course, the Amador Water Agency doesn't learn lessons. Um, acts not in the interests of our community, and while they may have been acting in the interests of, you know, treated water or public health, you know, having only half the road paved is also a public health hazard because of accidents. And it's just, uh, an incon, uh, can be a lot more than an inconvenience. But I'd also like to point out that Richard Farrington here is using some of the same, so he's used this, these tanks that are apparently gonna have their roofs fall in if we get heavy snow as a reason to justify the three-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar, um, um, whatever, strategic plan that the agency has, um, between now and twenty-thirty-five, which I'd like to remind the board is, uh, over twenty-thousand dollars per some sixteen-thousand people that the agency serves. That's per person. That's a lot of money. That's gonna be putting us, this county, and one of our primary resources, which by the way is free out of the river, um, at, uh, in debt for at least the next fifty years. That's disgusting. And basically, what we've seen today is, and we continue to see from the agency, is a lack of ability to tell the truth or possibly massaging of the truth. Whatever it is, it's not right, and it needs to be stopped. And I thank you, or the supervisors, for taking some sort of stand on this, but further stand needs to be taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there, um, is there any other public comment? Any Zoomers?
No, but I will say we have Terry Cox on Zoom if, if you have any questions for her.
Okay. Or any further questions?
I will also add that, uh, uh, Terry is retiring after this, and, uh, she will be thoroughly missed. She's done a great job with all these, uh, these projects, so thank you, Terry. You know, I'd like to echo that. I think she's been a very good consultant to work with, always was on it, their job very well. So Terry, wish you well in retirement, and thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Okay, so, um.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I think we had a public hearing going.
Yep. So we have a motion from Forster, seconded by Onetto, to close the public hearing. Could we call the roll call, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Is there, um, how does the board want to proceed?
I'd move to approve the closeout certification form for the Pioneer Water Rehabilitation Project Phase Two and authorize submission to the state.
Okay. Do we have a second? Supervisor Crew, any, uh?
I'll second it.
Okay. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm staying in protest.
Okay, motion carries. All right, and that concludes our, um, public hearing for item six B, I mean, item six A. So moving on to item six B. Surveying Department, this is a public hearing and adoption of res- resolution of approval for certificate of merger for John L. Chapman. Um, the property involved is, in said merger is lots twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and a portion of thirty of River Pine Subdivision Unit Four. As shown in Book One of Subdivision Maps at page sixteen, APNs zero-one-four-dash-zero-five-three-dash-zero-one-two and zero-one-four-dash-zero-five-three-dash-zero-zero-three.
Thank you. I'm Tisha Adams, Administrative Technician for the Surveying Department. I don't know if the county surveyor made it to the Zoom call.
I did.
Okay.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
Good morning.
Tisha, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. We have no controversy in this certificate of merger. The applicant has provided all documentation.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Supervisor Onetto, second by Supervisor Brown. Could we call the roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to, um, item six C, Surveying Department, um-
Um, that was just, oh, the public-
You're right.
I'll make a motion to approve the merger and also to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Onetto, second by Forster, to approve the resolution adopting the merger. Um, could we have roll call vote?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's a little ambitious there, but, uh, for moving on to i- item six C, again, the surveying department's a public hearing and adoption of rel- resolution approving the abandonment of a public utility easement and accepting an irrevocable and perpetual dedication in relation to the boundary line adjustment as requested by Dennis Corielis- Cor- Corles, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And Jean Lauree Ainsworth, trustees of the Dennis J. Corles and Jean Laureen, uh, Ainsworth Family Re- Rec- Re- Revocable Trust, um, and, uh, David J. Skr- Skr- Skurdy and Sierra M. Skurdy. The property involved is said abandonment and dedication and the boundary line adjustment is off Fiddletown Road and will exchange point five-six acres of Cecil Parcel, zero-two-one dash zero-five-zero dash zero-four-three and zero-two-one dash three-eight-zero dash zero-one-nine. Okay.
Thank you. The applicants have provided all documentation necessary. The easement is between the two properties that are being merged. They just wanna, um, move it.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing. Is there any public comment?
Could I, could I just ask you in the future to include a map on these so we can see exactly what, um-
I apologize. I, I thought that there was one with the original submission. I will make sure to verify that in the pre-tr- future.
Yeah, I, I don't need to see it for this one, but like on certificates of merger and abandonment of utility easements, it's just nice to see a map and-
If, if I'm not mistaken, there was a problem that IT and the board clerks and I were working on, and these were the two, that it was the map PDF.
Okay.
So I apologize, but I will, um, I know the, the hard copies were delivered.
All right, thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay, so is there any public comment on this particular item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Forster, second by Brown, to close the public hearing. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'll entertain, uh-
Move to approve the resolutions of approval and acceptance for these, uh, abandonment of public utility easements and accepting their revocable and perpetual dedication in relation to the boundary line adjustments.
Okay. Second. Motion by Supervisor Forster, second by Supervisor Brown to approve. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Onetto?
Yes.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we are done with our public hearings and then we're moving back to the regular agenda.
Can we, uh, take a, a quick break, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. That's, uh, why don't we start up at five after?
You're not going on vacation, are you?
Thank you, Tisha. Thank you, Tisha. You did a wonderful job.
Yeah, thanks, Roger and Tisha.
Yep.
Okay. Bye-bye, Roger.
All right, Bertie, break time.
Let's bring it back into session. And, um, we're back on the, uh, regular agenda. And, um, item five E, this is a request by the citizens of the community for, uh, a no parking zone along New, uh, along York Lane, which is off of New York Ranch Road, if you're not familiar with that. And, um, uh, Mark, do you want to, uh, kind of tee this up or?
No, I think, I think we can just leave it at, at the fact that we're having some parking issues along that road and-
Okay, good.
Uh, uh, and move along quickly.
All right.
Um, I just have one question, uh, for Mark. Um, if somebody wanted to, you know, if we approved this and then somebody wanted to have a party out there, you know, whether, you know, a wedding or whatever, is there a variant that can be brought in or is it just, when we say no parking, it's no parking?
Um, the, the answer would be, we would take a look at it. Um, if we do know that a large event is going to happen, it could be similar to any type of encroachment, a special event, uh, and take a look at it and take it case by case. Um, but at this point, uh, with as few homes that there are, chances are it may or may not happen.
Okay.
So-
Didn't all the, um, property owners sign the petition?
Yes, they did.
So if they have that party, they could probably invite all the neighbors so that nobody comes. That's the way it works.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it probably, I mean, if people had a, if people parked along the road, by the time the cops found out about it, it'd probably be over. So I don't see a problem with it.
That, that's the problem. It, it's with this, by the time that people are, you know, a tow truck is called out or someone's gonna write tickets, uh, the issue's gone usually. So it's a, it's a dissuader versus a, a punisher kind of a situation.
I, I'm sympathetic with this because of, uh, what happened up on Coal Mine Road where we needed to do the same thing. Where did we take the- needed to do the same thing. Where did we take the money out for that? From, from reserves?
I think we took that out of the, out of the community fund from the tribe.
Well, this one, there is no community fund, unless we can get Jackson Ranch to pay for it, which I'm doubtful of.
Um, to go ahead and answer that, we do have a budget line that does cover labor equipment as part of our routine maintenance. So fortunately, it's only nominal in the fact that it's less than $1,100 to put up these signs.
I, I just look at, it says funds are not included in the fiscal year 21, 22 Public Works operating budget. So you do have another, another rat hole.
Yes, but we can move around funds that we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other board questions or comments? Is there a public comment? I forgot to ask Supervisor Crew, did you have any comment?
No comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Whose district is this? Is this?
Uh, District Four.
District Four? I was gonna say District One, but it's Four, huh?
It's Four. And this, yeah, it's District One and Four kind of, um, are, well, they're on opposite sides of the street, actually.
Right.
I'll leave it up to Supervisor Crew if he wants to get in on making a motion today.
Do we need to make a motion or just put this on the consent for the next time?
You have to waive the reading of the, of the ordinance, waive the reading of the amendment.
All right. I would make a motion to waive the reading of the proposed amendment to Amador County Code, Chapter 10, Point 12, prohibit parking along York Lane, and schedule for adoption on consent at the next regular meeting.
Saka? Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Crew and a second by Supervisor Brown. Could we call the roll call, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. I thank the supervisors for your support and so does my constituents, or so do my constituents.
All right, it made sense.
Moving on to item five F, this is request to add one child protective services social worker and adding one child protective services social worker supervisor. And Anne Watts is gonna talk about this. Hi, Anne.
Good morning, Anne Watts with the Department of Social Services. Today I'm asking to add two positions to our child protective services unit. This would be a significant help to our staff as well as to the families that we are serving. We have analyzed our revenue and we've determined that we have sufficient state and federal funds for both of these positions, and these positions would not require any county general funds. So with that, I request that you approve these two positions.
If there's any one department that's been hit really hard by the past year and a half, aside from public health, the, it's this one. So they, they can certainly use the help. They have not had the unloaded bankroll the public health had, has.
Right. Well, I was just looking at your table here and it looks like, uh...
And no general fund could be used on it either, so.
And the 190,000, that's for the both positions or?
Each.
Each, okay.
So the cost of, if you need to create more office space or need more guests or anything, that's pretty minimal compared to the staff costs, so.
It's very minimal. In fact, we've already made some other changes in addition to what I suggested here. We have one of our, our only program manager in that unit has moved her office across the hall, and our two supervisors are sharing her office, so we've already made space for these positions.
Okay. You talked about they'll be sustainable.
Yes.
The funding source should be ongoing, you believe?
Yes, we feel confident it will be.
It's coming from just routine realignment funds.
Yeah.
Any?
I'm fine with it.
Any other board questions or comments? Supervisor Crew?
Uh, makes sense to me.
Okay.
No general fund dollars, that rings my bell.
Okay, good to hear. Any public comment? Any Zoomers?
I'd move to support the request of adding one child protective services social worker and one child protective services social worker supervisor.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Supervisor Forster and a second from Supervisor Onetto. Would you call the roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it.
Thank you all so much. This will be very good news for our staff.
Yes, thanks for all you do.
Have a good day.
Um, moving on to item five G, this was a resolution endorsing, general resolution endorsing peaceful and productive problem solving.
Do you think we can maybe send the, maybe get the Taliban to speak on this?
Um, I don't think they're available by Zoom today.
Gladly not.
Did you, did you bring this forward?
I brought it forward from a constituent that asked that we consider it.
Yeah, you know, it's, um, I can understand where they're coming from in a way, but also it's, uh, I think we have criminal laws that address these type of actions that person took, whichever, whatever reason they took them, that wasn't right. But I don't know if I support a resolution like this. I think we, I'd prefer we spend our time on more important issues like cleaning up our forests and saving our homes, maybe our lives. And it's, I can't help, there's idiots in life, or you find them all over the place. A lot of nice people, a lot of people do things they shouldn't do. And that's why we have a criminal law and I don't see this resolution as gonna really change anything.
Well, I think it's still important to take a stand, and more importantly, with respect to the local school board dynamics, I think that some of the meetings have been very heated and very emotional. And I think it's warranted to point out that sometimes people go a little too far. And, you know, this is, this has actually been growing for some time, you know, with, uh, it's never really happened at our board meetings. You know, we've had some contentious meetings, but nothing like that.
Well, I think part of what it is, is there's a lot of people out there, Frank, they're, they're being pushed. And I think people are being tired of stuff that is being pushed in the schools and even on society, and they're, and they're getting real unhappy. I guess I could support this resolution if we put something in there that, if we add a paragraph, that we also condemn burning at police stations and rioting in the streets, then I'll, I'll support it.
No, I don't, I don't think so. That's not related to this matter.
I think I can support it with one change.
Okay.
Finish writing this. I would like to take out the fifth whereas, the violent incident caused injury to a valued teacher and traumatized the school community. It's already stated in the fourth, a recent violent incident on an elementary school campus has shed a negative light nationally in our proud community. So I'd like the next whereas to state something like, whereas the actions of one individual are not representative of the Amador County community as a whole.
Okay.
And I think that's one thing, the press took advantage of this to demonize that individual, but in effect it demonized our whole community, which I don't think is representative. You're talking one person out of 36,000 residents. So if that is added as a replacement to the fifth whereas, then I can, then I can support it.
Okay. So is that your motion?
I, I would make a motion to that effect.
All right. Is there a second?
I'd second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Correct me with the Richard's motion.
Got it. So we have a motion by Supervisor Forster, second by Supervisor Crew, to approve the resolution with changes, as, as mentioned by Supervisor Forster. Could we call for the roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So we'll change that and we'll move on to item five H, which is, actually, we didn't actually, okay, never mind. Discussion on possible action relative to comments from the board to the California Public Utilities Commission regarding the proposed middle mile broadband project throughout the state. And specifically, the broadband, the board should consider requesting that the connection along State Route 49 between 16 and El Dorado County be included in the project. Okay. And I believe that someone from CSAT might be available?
Jeff Neal?
Yes. Hi, Jeff. Sorry that we're so late.
Oh, no problem. It's, it's always interesting to, to watch a border supervisors in action.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. I just couldn't help myself. But there's a, a presentation that, about the middle mile project. So this is actual legislation from SB, I forget. But it's, the state is actually going to build this, so they're, they've already funded it, and so it's, it's actually gonna happen. And then there was a proposed map, which is at the, the last page of, of this packet. And that's something we should have actually proposed comments on. So would you take it away, Jeff?
Absolutely. Let me share my screen here. While I'm trying to make sure that works, say, you know, not all of us get to watch a border supervisors in action every, every week or two. So, so it really is interesting seeing you guys, all the work you're doing for the community. Can you see the, the slide there?
Yes, you're sharing.
All right. This is, these are slides from a briefing that the, the CPUC gave for county officials about a week and a half ago. And I just wanted to run through it. There's a fair number of slides, so I'll run through it fairly quickly, but I think it gives a good background on what the middle mile is and, and the issues that are before the CPUC. So thank you, Chair, for inviting me to be here today. And always good to see you as well, past President Forster. So just to give context to this conversation, California's broadband gap, as, as I think you all know, is significant. Over half of Californians use broadband at a benchmark rate over 100 megabits per second, but over half of rural households lack access to broadband at, at those speeds. It's also an issue of availability on tribal lands. And, and so the solution is to build infrastructure, make sure people have access to it, and to make it affordable. And SB 156 and the middle mile and last mile funding that it allocates would, would affect the infrastructure, building the infrastructure and providing access. So SB 156, which was passed as a budget trailer bill last month in July before the legislature went on recess, allocated money to four, four different ways to build infrastructure and provide access. One is to build the middle mile, which is the main thing we'll be talking about today, is three and a quarter billion dollars to build a state-owned network that would be available to any internet provider on non-discriminatory terms to provide that middle mile service. It also provides $2 billion for last mile service to actually connect homes and businesses to either the state-owned middle mile or, or any other internet provider, so people actually get that access. There's a loan loss reserve of $750 million that will make it easier for local governments and nonprofits to get financing to build broadband infrastructure of their own. And importantly, it provides $50 million for local technical assistance so that local governments can, can prepare and apply for funds and help plan broadband in their communities. So just to define a couple of terms, because the middle mile, last mile discussion is, those, those are not terms that everybody knows, of course, fairly technical. So you have the, the backbone and the long haul, these are big, you know, this is the backbone of the internet. It runs, for example, up and down I-5, and this is where everything connects to. It runs across the country. These are real long haul wires. The middle mile with this three and a quarter billion, and this is, I think they made a mistake on this slide, it says three and three-quarter billion, it's three and a quarter billion dollars. It, it applies, it's kind of like, an analogy would be high voltage wires. They go tens, maybe hundreds of miles from the backbone to each neighborhood or community. And then the last mile are the, are the fiber optic wires that go from those middle mile nodes in each community or neighborhood to the individual homes and businesses to actually provide service. So in SB 156, we have a total of three and a quarter billion dollars to build a middle mile network and $2 billion for the directly funded last mile infrastructure. The reason for the middle mile, the, the reason for the last mile is obvious. We need to get internet, fiber optic internet to homes and businesses so that people can, you know, go to school, have a, run a small business, you know, access medical care, all the other things that we do online these days. But the middle mile piece is, is tough because right now, you know, a small broadband provider or a new broadband provider, it's just a real high hurdle for them to build all the middle mile from wherever the nearest backbone or long haul is to a community, and then to also build all the last mile in that community. And so essentially, all of the middle mile in the state right now is owned by individual companies. And for the most part, they don't let anybody else use it. And so if an incumbent provider builds out to a community, they build all the middle mile, then they build the last mile, and they have a monopoly in that area. And right now, about half of the broadband, right, about half of the households in the state only have access to one broadband provider. And that's certainly the case in Amador County. There are, at, at 100 megabit per second speeds, there are about 26,000 people in Amador County who don't have access to that at all. And then another 11,500 who only have one provider. And for those of you doing the math at home, that, that adds up to pretty much the whole population of, of, of the county. If you reduce that speed barrier, you talk about 25 megabits per second, you have about 9,000 people who don't have any access at all in the county, and 27,000 people who only have one provider. Because for a second provider to go out and build all that same infrastructure, the whole middle mile, all the way back to the backbone, and then also the last mile, by the time they get there, they're not gonna have everybody in the community that wants broadband to get it from them. They're only gonna get, say, a half of the customers, which makes all that capital expenditure take a lot longer to pay for itself. And so if the state builds a middle mile network, just like it, it would be along the state highway. And so if the state builds a middle mile network, just like it, it would be along the state highway network, and in a lot of ways, it's analogous to the state highway network. Anybody can use it on non-discriminatory terms. It'll make it a lot easier, faster, and cheaper for folks to build last mile in each community, because it takes a big burden of that infrastructure cost off of it. So, you know, this slide says that middle mile's important for a lot of the reasons I was just saying. It enables the last mile infrastructure, and of course, where you have more broadband, where you have cheaper broadband, you're gonna have a lot more economic opportunity. And it does make it more affordable to both build. And if it's more affordable to build, it makes it more affordable to access broadband for the individual customers. So this is the proposed map for where this new state-owned statewide middle mile network would be built. And we'll get into a little more detail about your area soon, as, as the Chair said. But these orange lines go along about eight thousand miles of state highway. So we already have, the state already has the easements, they already have the, the property. And what they tried to do with this proposed map is connect as many unserved communities, specifically census-designated places, as possible, or get close to them to make it easier and cheaper to build out internet.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm just gonna jump in real quick. So the very last page in your board packet is if you zoom in on that map of California, this is what is being proposed for Amador County. And so it has connections to Jackson, Martel, Ione, Upcountry, to Pine Grove, Red Corral, and Pioneer. But, you know, certainly, there's no connection to, to Drytown Plymouth, Amador City, even Fiddletown, River Pines, Volcano, and other, other areas, Buckhorn, I think, too, yeah. So, plus, we also have a internet service provider in the area, which can't necessarily provide a lot of details at this point, but is actively working and putting fiber in the, the Upcountry area. So those are two things to consider. And we need to provide comment, okay, here it is up on the screen there. We need to provide comment to the Public Utilities Commission about their plan.
I, I agree with what you said as far as, probably on all accounts. Especially if we have a local provider, you know, I wanna see people get broadband, but also I don't wanna kill a local provider. And if this is something that will be beneficial for people to get broadband, and also for our local providers, hey, I'd be all for it.
Yeah, well, this is, again, the, the backbone, so it's, it's not directly to customers, but.
I understand that, yeah.
But, yeah, and it's, this is funding that's actually there and is gonna go forward, so we should.
Something else was a problem, too, is Shenandoah Valley.
Yeah.
I know I was talking to Frank Luchinski one time, and last time they, they did like, I think they did like the last mile, or maybe it was the middle mile up through Fiddletown, and he said he didn't know why they did it through there, because it, it wouldn't really function real well. And he, he says, probably should have just do Shenandoah, and then maybe up in the Fiddletown, but it's probably something we should maybe look at, too. Which I'm kind of a little bit confused, because they put fiber up through Plymouth, up through Fiddletown, and out through Hale Road, I think. And I thought it, I thought it was like a middle mile, but now maybe it's owned by a company, because I was talking to Frank Luchinski, trying to get good service to the Fiddletown Community Center. And it seemed like to, for them to rent the bandwidth, or whatever you call it, a, a space on the, on that system was prohibitively expensive.
Well, I think those are the, kind of the two comments that I was interested in making to the Public Utility Commission is, we would like to see extension to those areas, but we would also like to bring in to the conversation our local provider, which has already been doing a lot of the work in certain areas, so that we don't need redundancy. Or maybe we do, but let's have that conversation. I'm not an expert in broadband.
I think that'd be a good conversation, because we don't wanna, they provide a, a good service to the community, and if you do something that basically kills them, that, that's not a good thing.
Right. I, I don't think it's gonna kill them, because they're still gonna have the, the end user.
I think it might help them, but, but I agree, we should have that conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, Jeff, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I think I'd be interested in, in the conversation you, you do have with your local provider, and whether they believe that this middle mile would make it easier for them to, to build, you know, easier and cheaper to build to more communities in the local area and nearby. Because certainly, that's, that's part of the intention.
Well, they don't necessarily cover every part of the county, so, but that's why we need, we, we need to have a discussion.
Yeah, and it might make it easier for them to do the last mile.
Exactly right. And, you know, those, while, while these comments are mostly about the middle mile, let's not forget that part of SB one fifty six was providing two billion dollars to help fund last mile construction. Now, that's not for the state to do it. Those would be for grants to go out to providers, large and small, to local agencies or JPAs, who, who want to build last mile broadband service to areas that, that don't have it, or that only have slow speeds. And so, you know, working with where this new statewide middle mile would be, I think one of the things you could comment on is both the location, but also the priority. You know, I believe that unserved areas and severely underserved areas should be prioritized. Because one of the things about this, this middle mile network, you don't need to build the whole thing before it's useful. Each segment, as it's built, can provide service to last mile fiber that is, that's built from it. And so this will be happening all over the state. It's not like we have to start in one spot and just build in a, in a, in a line. Each segment can be built individually and is useful, as long as it connects in to the, to the long haul wire. So to the comments specifically that the county might wanna make, the CPUC is required by SB one fifty six to solicit and receive public comments. They have until October twenty first to do so. That's ninety days after the bill became law. And their, their comments will be, that they're looking for are, as some of the things you were talking about, the location, the priority. And then they're gonna take those comments, they're gonna finalize the map, they're gonna work with the California Department of Technology, CDT, who is tasked with planning and developing the middle mile network. Use those, use those maps to decide where to do so. So the things that they're asking for comment on, for both rural and urban areas, because I know a lot of the conversation is around rural areas that don't have it. I have been surprised at how many communities in urban areas also lack. Sometimes it's a neighborhood that's right next to a well-connected neighborhood, and they just have a totally insufficient broadband as well. So what the comments are about is about where there's existing infrastructure, where the priority route should be. And, you know, some of the end users that could use, that could use the new network. So on this slide here, I want to see, the date has changed. While it says that comments are due October twenty seventh, they pushed that back by a week at the request of, of some of the parties to the, to the rulemaking. And so the, for formal comments, for those who are a party to the proceeding, which is a very formal process to become a party to the proceeding, those comments are now due this Friday, September third. And then reply comments are due two weeks after that. That's just for the most formal kind of comments that are very legalistic in form and format. But, but in addition to that, informal comments can be made by anybody without going through some of those legal hoops. And, and the PUC was encouraged, and, and there's not a deadline for that. Obviously, they'll be done with the whole proceeding by late October. But those informal comments can be made by any of you individually or collectively through the PUC's website. And so, like I said earlier, they want comments on, on, you know, where they should build, you know, as you guys were talking about, and where should be priorities.
Jeff, real quick, should we be making formal comments or the informal comments? You kind of, we discussed this briefly last time.
Yes, so when folks asked that in the briefing, the, the PUC staff were, seemed to be careful to say that, that both of them are useful, both being a, a party to the proceeding or submitting the comments informally. And the informal comments have the, you know, benefit of not being, and not having a deadline of this Friday. CSAC is going to be providing formal comments to, to the CPUC on this matter, from a statewide perspective. You know, obviously, I'm not going to say, you know, there's a, there's an anchor institution here, that, you know, the middle mile should run right by it, because those are comments more appropriate to, to local officials such as yourself. So while the, the formal comments seem to be useful for building up a formal record, which, which I think is useful to them, they made a point to say that the informal comments are still become part of the record and are still taken into account in the final decision.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Forrester, wouldn't it be nice if, you think they'd listen to a comment that, that says something like elected officials should have reliable internet at their homes that are out in the country? Probably not, huh?
I think there's, there's one way to find out, Supervisor. Let's do it and see what happens.
You know, I have a question, Jeff. Do you have any idea why the, I guess here it goes in Sutter Creek, which should make sense, it's a good-sized town, but like Ammer City, I don't know that much about Ammer City's internet capabilities there, what, what people, their access, but I know Drytown is like a desert. There was, there was access there, and a guy, guy took away this small tower. He wanted, he wanted more rent for the small tower than Volcano could pay, and they had to close it down. And I know people were scrambling trying to get any kind of internet there. And it looks like it doesn't go to Plymouth, but I wonder, could that be, could there, could that be because there might have been existing middle mile there already, maybe?
I, I wonder the same thing, Supervisor, looking at this map. You know, I know that the, the yellow dots represent communities that don't have access to, that, that are considered unserved. And I believe that that's unserved at, you know, with a possible speed of one hundred megabits per second. Sometimes, though, that, you know, the dots get smaller or bigger, depending on how many households are unserved. And so I believe, for example, that at Fiddletown, there is a tiny little yellow dot. And at Plymouth, there is, it's hard to, whereas, you know, we, we can see that for Sutter Creek and Jackson, they aren't designated with a yellow dot. So they, they have a service there, according to the PUC's data. You know, one of the things that we know, going back a ways, is that the data that they have is, is not always great. It comes from the providers themselves, and sometimes the providers have a, an incentive to say they're providing more better service than they, than they actually are, thinking of one or two large providers in particular, that have a history of doing that. You know, one of the limitations on this network is that they, they are exclusively going along state highways. I know that's one of the reasons why the discussion items for you all today is to go along Highway forty nine from Sutter Creek up to the El Dorado County line. It's a road I used to drive on daily on weekdays when I lived out there. And, you know, same question as you, Supervisor, I don't know if they're not planning to do it there because it already has some service, or if it's, you know, just part of their calculation about how to build it more efficiently.
Question for you, Mr. Neal. Now, you just said the question, looking for, go from Sutter, Sutter Creek over to like Eldorado along forty nine, I believe? But what, what we have on our agenda here is talks about going from Highway sixteen to El Dorado County.
My mistake, Supervisor. I, I didn't have the agenda in front of me. It looks like on this proposed map, it is here, this, you know, these orange lines represent where they're proposing to to put the middle mile and it does look like it only goes up forty nine to, to the northern edge of Sutter Creek.
Question for you. That lineup where your cursor is, that goes from like, oh, the river over to, that's weird. Right, that's, that's already, that's one that's already existing or proposed in El Dorado County.
This is just a map of, of the proposed route for the, for the state middle mile network.
Okay, I mean, so El Dorado's proposing to take it, take it to, to the county line on their side, it looks like.
This is, this is just a proposal by, this was a map that was put together by CPUC staff. And the, the public input is what they're asking for now, so I, it looks like that's what the PUC staff is proposing. And I'm, I'm not sure why they have it along, you know, stretches north and south of forty nine, but not on that stretch.
Well, yeah, well, what it could be, I think there, there may be some tribal members that live up near the Consumes River there. That may be why they extended all the way down the river in El Dorado. But I think we ought to propose to them, from where your cursor is, the river there, extend it all the way down to Sutter Creek. And if you, and it'd make more sense. Down to Sutter Creek rather than down just to complete the forty nine connection? Yeah.
Well, that would, that would complete, you know, the forty nine connection all the way. However, it would be nice if it could go through Ammer City, Sutter Creek, rather than directly on forty nine.
Yeah, that'd be the intent, yeah.
You know, even though forty nine, even though that's not a state highway anymore, but that's where, that's where people and the businesses are. But that's why we need to kind of put this all out there. I don't know if it's, I, I doubt if it's because they know that Volcano Telephone has done work in the area, because Volcano Telephone's done a lot of work in the Pine Grove area, and they're proposing something out there.
And even if it didn't go direct to the town, if it went closer, it'd still be helpful.
Yes, yes, yeah, you want, you wanna be able to connect into that backbone and then, and do the last mile. And, you know, we need to have, you know, engage Volcano, which is a local internet service provider, and find out what they were doing. I, I have spoken to representatives there. They can't, they, they said that they cannot speak to certain things right now because of confidentiality, but they're very interested in engaging. So that's kind of where it is right now, and I don't think we should second guess anything. I think we should say that, hey, you know, Fiddletown and, for that matter, River Pines and Shenandoah Valley are major areas of commerce in the county. They may not have the population numbers, but still, they're busy on the weekends, and they need that kind of internet service as well. So.
Now, somebody was saying, I don't know if it was Chuck or you, Frank, somebody's saying that it's only going along state highways?
Yes, they own the right of way. And actually, Jeff, Caltrans is actually going to be in charge of the installation.
The, the California Department of Technology will be selecting an entity to do that work, but certainly, everybody's guess is that it will be Caltrans, since they are the ones who, who own the, the roads. But yeah, the, the idea is definitely to just go along state highways, and to, as, as you all were saying, at least get close. You know, this, this network will not itself provide direct service to individuals, but just by having it there, it'll make it easier and cheaper for broadband providers to get into unserved, you know, small and mid-sized communities.
Well, certainly extending from Sutter Creek to Plymouth, and even to the county line to El Dorado, you know, all along Highway forty nine makes a lot of sense.
And running it down sixteen.
Well, it is, I, I, oh yeah, and then sixteen.
You know, what I think, I think there might be one, not maybe part of, part of the fly anointment, there might be a, a middle mile already going up Highway sixteen through Fiddletown, I think.
Well, then, then that, that's great, if, if it's already there, then hopefully they'll know about it.
I think it might be a private provider, it's been under, I think Obama's stimulus deal, I believe, but I know when Fiddletown was looking, would, get a, a service, it was really, 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 really prohibitively expensive for like the library or the community center, I think it's like eleven hundred bucks a month, I want to say, or something like that, to get a high-speed service.
Yeah, well, this will, will be, I know that they probably have some service in the area, but again, that's why we need to engage the local service provider to see what they've already done, so that we, we don't, why should we reinvent the wheel in certain areas?
Unless we can find it, unless there's, in some, I don't know, I'm just talking, ma- ma- maybe Frank, there, if maybe there's a service provider there, but if they're, they're gouging everybody, they're running a second line that people can afford, well, that might be even better.
Right, so I, I don't see the harm in making the comment that the, the middle miles, they should consider extending all the way along forty-nine through Plymouth to the Eldorado County line.
From Sutter Creek.
Sutter Creek, Martel, and then also down Highway sixteen, and to, to engage local service providers that have already been working in the area and building a middle mile as well as a last mile, so that.
I'd like to gauge them before we submit our comments too, because we're not experts, and if we have something that's grossly in error, I, I don't want to send that down for consumption by the powers to be.
Well, I can, I can share it with those folks and see what they say, but they have said that they can't really, because of some confidentiality issues, they don't want to talk at this point in time.
I understand, but they, they might be able to look at our comments though and say, this is not correct.
I would, I'd be more than happy to, you know, make sure that that happens, I agree with that.
Okay, that's good.
So those would be the three major salient features is extending along Highway forty-nine from Sutter Creek to, through Plymouth to the Eldorado County line, running down Highway sixteen to Plymouth, and then working or engaging local service providers that are already doing work in the area, and have provided middle mile as well as last mile service, so that we're not. Agreed. Is there any other comments we should consider?
If I could have one, one moment, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
You know, one, one of the other benefits of having the statewide middle mile network, even in areas where there's already a private provider that has middle mile, is, you know, one, to, to combat the difficulties that monopolies pose, but the other reason is for redundancy, the good kind of redundancy, you know, in, in, in times of, you know, increasing natural disasters, as we're seeing right now, having a, a second network can be useful, especially since, you know, the state is prevented from having really any regulatory, regulatory authority at all over the rates or locations for broadband providers, so just something else to keep in mind as you talk to, to Volcano.
Okay. Mr. Supervisor Brown, I would agree with that, just the fact of Kirkwood, the dozers are up there dealing with the fire damage part of their electrical line going into, into Kirkwood, so they're back up on generators right now, so redundancy in that aspect would be a good thing.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Are there any public comments? Supervisor Crew, did you have any comments?
Well, Mr. Chair, my only comment would be that even though Volcano Telephone is sitting behind the veil of confidentiality, if you can get more of the middle mile built that they don't have to involve themselves with, and they can just attach to it, it would be to their great benefit.
Okay.
So maybe they need to be a little more, not so risk averse, in giving out some information.
Okay, understood. Is there any public comment? That's rumors. One, one suggestion would be for the Chair and the Vice Chair to draft some comments and then submit them, and have a discussion with Volcano Telephone on that as well. Is that something that's agreeable with this board?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so that's the direction that we will take. And I want to thank Jeff, Neil for the great presentation and your time, and I'm glad that you got rewarded by seeing the Board of Supervisors in action, so. So again, thanks Jeff, thanks for all your, your good work at CSAC.
Say hello to everybody at CSAC, Jeff.
I will Supervisor.
Thank you, sir.
All right, well, thank you, so we're moving on now to item five I, and this is consideration of a letter from the board to the US Forest Service and others stating the board's position regarding the prosecution of the recent Tamarack Fire and the associated response by the US Forest Service, I guess probably other fires maybe, but discussion relative to a letter expressing general concern regarding US Forest Service management policies, and, why don't we just open this up to general discussion amongst the board members? Supervisor Neto, fire away.
Yeah, I believe Jeff Brown and I, Supervisor Brown and I, we did talk to the District Ranger, and kind of came to conclusion that, hey, this fire's still raging pretty hard, foresters is probably under the gun, and we thought we'd, we could have a little discussion on it today, but as far as having a full discussion, probably better when the foresters is more able to come down and give us a presentation and talk about what happened and what didn't happen, you say that's probably fair Jeff?
Yes.
Agreed.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with that, and also, I think that, you know, try to get as much information about what's been happening on the ground, so that we have a good, a complete picture of, you know, what happened, and what, what would make some of the best policies going forward.
Yeah, and I, I.
I would agree with that, I think you don't hit somebody when they're down and they're, they're fighting all these fires the best of their ability, I hope, but I think some of this has been mitigated by US Forest Service Chief Randy Moore's declaration already, that says if there's a fire, put it out, if you can, so I think that has really,
Right.
Really helped my feeling about this, and, and I, I know Randy Moore, he's spoken to RCRC when I was on there, and really a, a good person, so his first action was, was really indicative of how he's going to handle his job.
Agreed.
Right. Well, I, I will say this, and I don't want to hit somebody when they're down, but I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty tired of letting them stand back up. I think what's been going on in the forest is, I grew up in those forests since the time I was a baby, this area that burnt was my playpen as a kid, and then I did, we ran cattle up there, we did logging up there.
You have a chainsaw in your playpen too?
Nah, now and then had a rattlesnake, I chopped their heads off, so not a problem. Actually, literally did have a few rattlesnakes at times, not in our playpen, we were playing when we were kids, we went down the, I think it was Brunner's Hardware Store or whatever, and it turned out the person that was sorting us was a rattlesnake, that was kind of a little bit of setting for a minute, we took care of that problem, but no, it's what's gone on in our national forest, I've, I've watched it happen for years, I've jumped down, hollered, yelled, screamed, cried, begged, pleaded, cussed, threatened, and nothing seems to work. We've got a disaster up there like I've never seen in my lifetime, and it's, I think it's something that was quite generally preventable, and I think it's, we need, we need to have a, a sit-down conversation here, call things what they are, I don't care if I'm not nice, I think it's, we've got a real problem in the forest, I don't, I don't blame it all on the Forest Service, I think Congress is culpable for some of the rules they get foresters to engage in, and it's, it's got to change, you know, either that or just burn all the forest and don't, don't even worry about putting them out, because they're spending a lot of money and putting lives in danger, either we got to change it or, or live with burnt forest, forest that continues to burn. So yeah, I'd like to have a.
We can have this discussion, maybe get the, all the appropriate folks present.
Yeah, it'd be good.
When this, you know, crisis is over, and we can discuss what would be the best thing for this board to support and get behind. Yep, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And the, the one thing I, I would like to add just right quick is the fact that this fire that we've had coming up here has been unrepresented before. Both Supervisor Neto and I were just flabbergasted yesterday when the fire was rolling across granite and hitting pockets of trees, you know, just little, little, small patches of tree, and they were still putting up enough sparks to run to the next pocket of trees, you know, this is, you know, Forest Service, CalFire, have all used granite to do it, so this is, this fire this year is just crazy.
Agreed. Okay, so we're gonna probably table this until a future date, but we will take public comment if somebody wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to read something that I wrote this morning about this, because I'm sick about this, and if you aren't, then you aren't feeling anything. As catastrophic fire ravages some of the most enjoyed areas of our county, it is time to start putting some real pressure on broader levels of government, so that the apop- apocalyptic fire can be brought under control. I just want to add right here that I don't agree with the current tact that's been brought up by you gentlemen today. This needs to go to elected officials. Elected officials are responsible for what happens in these government agencies. Unfortunately, or however you want to view it, the staff can just quit, they can go do something else, they're never responsible, we need to hold elected officials responsible for this. I'll continue. Many among us are calling these climate change fires, and while I agree that our regional climate is changing rapidly, it would be wise to take a closer look at regional management before we blame global factors we do not control. It is long since time to ask some tough questions. Some of those might be the following. What is the impact on our regional climate of burning up millions of acres of forest in catastrophic fire? How can we expect our region's climate to behave the same way it did a century ago when we have been diverting sixty percent of the region's water for the last hundred years? Talking about the state water project, the federal water project, the diversion of water, and here in Ammer County, the diversion of water to East Bay Municipal Utility District. How can we expect the forest to be healthy and fire resilient when it is managed for special interest without being viewed as an interlinked toll, whose undeniably most important function is providing water and oxygen? How can we expect houses not to burn into toxic water and air contaminating weight, contaminating waste, when there are no public incentives to protect buildings with sprinklers and/or readily available fire retardant? How can we expect homeowners to take care of their small forest holdings when they have not been taught to see the forest through the trees? So what are some possible steps to take and solutions to work towards? First of all, the air district, give us all a break. We need to be able to burn any and all safe days of the year without needing to pay permit fees to do the required work. Why is our winter time air more valuable than our summertime air? This is a state mandated program, so it deserves a letter from the county to the state. As for the clear and obvious problem of fuel in our forests, let's put people to work on it. Why not a two million person crew that avoids the courts by doing it by hand? Many of the lawsuits and policies that stop the cleanup of fuels are over new roads. Okay, so let's get on foot with chainsaws and hand tools, avoid building new roads, and recognize that while it certainly would be nice to have the timber, the water and air shed are orders of magnitude more important. What if we said, if you want to collect government services that you haven't directly paid for, you must work on this issue? There are many types of work to be done, including herding livestock, felling, brushing, burning, planting, mapping, feeding the crews, et cetera. It's time for us all to dig deep. I would ask that you, the Amater Board of Supervisors, in this intense time of many responsibilities and distractions, also take a hard look at what must happen to regenerate our county. It is glaringly obvious that allowing the forest lands here to be managed by people on the other side of the continent is not working. A large part of your role as supervisors must be to amplify the voice of your constituents' needs. Please make good on this role by petitioning larger scales of government with every means possible. We have no time to waste. Dig deep, Amater County Board of Supervisors. Dig deep, Mother Lode Counties. Dig deep, Sierra Life. The problems are increasingly complex, but the solutions are embarrassingly simple. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you one question? One thing you said there, if you're going to get government benefits, can you reference what you mean by that, or if you, you mean people that are getting welfare benefits or something else?
Well, Supervisor Forster, you know, I, I run a small business and it's, it's recently, these last eighteen months has been, or the last year basically, has been very difficult to get employees to work for more than a few hours before they want to go on unemployment again, and, and there's new levels of unemployment to where, you know, you don't even have to have paid in to unemployment, to receive unemployment now with these, the way that it's structured, you can be a contract worker, I mean, I should have just said, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be wealthier myself if I had taken the last eighteen months off, if I had, you know, quit doing my, my, my business and just collected work as a, collected money as a, as a contract worker from the government, I know people that I know that, around here that haven't worked in the twenty years that I've known them, and they're getting twelve to fifteen hundred dollars a week, so they certainly didn't pay into that, so I, when I was referencing that, I mean, it's, it was kind of a broad, like, this is to start a conversation, so I'm glad it did, but the, I mean, if you haven't, like, if you haven't paid in unemployment, or you want unemployment benefits beyond what you've paid in for, then let's get to work, and because, as we know, just like with, even with the firefighting situation, you know, we got some guys and gals out there who are risking their lives and better, you know, they got to be in the best physical shape possible, and then we got a lot of other people who are supporting them, who don't have to, you know, don't have to be in those really intense conditions, but are just as required a part of the machinery, and I believe that to be true with the forest management issue as well. So I think that, I guess when I first, when that, that concept kind of first arrived in my mind, I was thinking, oh, we'll talk about able-bodied people, but there's so much to do with this forest management issue that I think really anybody, you know, should be, should be kind of conscripted into this. anybody, um, eh, you know, should be, uh, should be, uh, kind of conscripted into this. And I'll, I'll add, and I, I don't, you know, I, I, I don't have any problem with the social support network, but there's gotta be some kind of line where we, uh, you know, where if, if, if it keeps going like this, I mean, I, I can't get any-
Well, I mean, welfare.
Yeah, it'd, it'd be nice, but I, I think the ACLU and other, in general, you can't, you can't give people government benefits and force them to work forward. I, I think, I'm like you, I, I, I haven't sat around a day in my life. I mean, there's things to do, but there are some people that, that, uh, collect the government benefits and sit at home and you're, and happy as a clam. I'm, I'm not one of those people. And the other thing is with all these people, you're not the only one having trouble hiring people in that world.
Oh, I, yeah.
With the government checks that, that keep coming and keep coming, uh, there's less incentive for people to work until the money runs out.
Right. So I'm aware of that and, and I'm also aware of the concerns that, you know, the, the issues with whoever it is, you know, these, these special interests, basically, um, that, uh, that might stymie that. And maybe that's not the best solution, but I think we gotta start looking at the goal and figuring out how we're gonna get from here to there and getting every single possible solution on the table. Um, and then figure out the ones that, you know, can and can't work and what the best plan is, and then keep re-analyzing that plan and making sure that we're working towards the goal. Because this situation is untenable. Even if we took away the, the fire, the fi- just the, the thing that makes me want to just, you know, go crawl in a hole right now, that feeling. If we took that away, just the impact, just the socioeconomic impact of the evacuation, the psychological impact of the evacuation, the socioeconomic and the psy- psychological impact of the smoke in our community and that we're acting like people should just continue on as, as normal? This is not normal. This is not okay. And even if this is the new normal, this is not a situation that we can live in for very long. And this has been going on since 2012. The, um, the smoke, such, we've basically been living in smoke here in the summer. It's getting worse and worse. You know, I never, I never felt here in Jackson, you know, between Jackson and Pine Grove, a thousand AQI, like, was on Friday morning. Um, but, you know, we've, we've been living in heavy smoke. Um, and I, and I, you know, at the risk of, uh, overstating the obvious, you know, that the, the Rim Fire in 2012, um, was the, was the largest fire in the state, the most destruct- you know, the destroyed the most area of the state, Benny Fire. And now that's just been completely eclipsed by these other fires. That's just kind of, that's just another little fire. And wit- and I think, I want to get back to the point of that, the, really, the, you know, people worry about like the Amazon Rainforest and what's being done down there. Folks, our air comes from these forests. It, yeah, it's a glob- it's globally connected to that down there, but this is our responsibility here. And who are we to tell them what to do down there when we're doing this here? So I, I'm just, I'm sick over this and, uh, and I've been sick over it for a while. I, I mean, uh, the, the work that, um, that my family and I and, uh, and the organization Calaveras Grown did, um, mostly in Calaveras County after the Buick Fire was a result of, you know, the feelings that we had around that fire, which was all about, um, erosion control and trying to really psychologically trying to get people to stay in their homes. Because I, you know, we haven't experienced this in recent times here in Amador County, but it's not just the homes that burned down that, um, you know, where psychological impacts happen. So, so when you go back to your home and your neighbor's home's burned down or all the forest around you's burned down and that, that landscape is completely changed, you just want to leave. And we don't want those people to leave Amador County. We don't want them to leave Eldorado County. We want the community to stay. So I'll, uh, I'll stop now, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Any, uh, board questions or comments at this point?
Yeah, I, I do have a couple of comments. I, I do agree with, um, what Mr. Krilic was saying as far as ultimately get back elected officials, and it does. Um, I think the foresters could probably go, they can, they can go straight down, straight down the road, then go left, then go right. And I think quite a ways, quite a far, quite a few, especially the, a lot of the, I'll call them ists, they've been pretty far left. I heard the other day, one of them was saying, well, if they did a, if they cut a tree bigger than ten inches, that, that would be a major impact or something like that and have to go through, and it was a NEPA and the NEPA analysis. And so it really curtailed what they could do as far as trying to do fuel reduction in, in a, um, in a foresters' project. Can this tree on this forest is nothing? I mean, there's way too many of them. And, um, I will say McClintock has been on this foresters' case for years, so he's done his job. Uh, I've been to meetings and I've been there when they, some people afterwards, he wasn't very nice and he was mean to Forest Service. He was very frustrated with Forest Service. And I think part of his problem, he needs to get some more help from other congressmen to get on board with cleaning up a forest. Um, I remember years ago I sent a letter to Senator Boxer. I was not in office then, I was, and I'm not the world's best writer, but I sat down and wrote a very comprehensive, cohesive letter laying out the problems I saw for National Forest and if we need to start, if you want to say logging or thinning or whatever, but basically cleaning up the forest, thinning them out, that we're gonna see major catastrophic fires like we've never seen. Um, I got a letter back thanking me for my, uh, input on electrical rates. That was the last letter I ever wrote to Barbara Boxer or her staff. But, yeah, it's something, what's going on up there is tragic. I mean, I spent my childhood in that area that burnt. And I spent a lot of, a lot of my life up there running cattle, logging, and what happened up there, if as a society, I'll just say society, so we're all guilty. If we were doing what we should be doing in those forests, I don't believe you'd see that kind of fire up there. We still see fires, absolutely. But what's happened now, um, we've lit a tinderbox, it's gotten really hot, there's a lot of heat coming out of there, and then you have inversion, the heat lays down, goes along the ground, preheats everything in front of it. Next day or next few hours, it takes off and blows up like a bomb and just keeps leapfrogging ahead. So, I mean, where this fire's going, I mean, it wouldn't shock me if it circles all the way around. I don't think it'll come back down here, but I wouldn't be totally shocked if it did. And that thing's got, I'll, I'll, um, you'd think it'd run in the rocks and maybe slow down, but so far that hasn't happened. I pray to God it does. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Chairman, we do have, uh, someone on Zoom whenever you-
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Campbell. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I hope to be there in person, but work precluded that. Um, the Forest Service, first of all, I'd like to say, Mr. Krilic, I don't often agree with you, but I agree a hundred percent wholeheartedly with most everything you said. Uh, you're right. Uh, I consider the Forest Service to be the most dangerous entity to our county and our future. And ignoring that is not beneficial to the people of Amador County. We have watched the fires just grow and grow and grow. In the year 2,000, 295,000 acres burned statewide in California. That would be a normal fire now. Last year, 4.3 million acres burned. And we're all just supposed to sit here and accept it as climate change. Certainly, there probably is some of that. But the real problem is there's been a radicalism in the bureaucracy. They don't want anything changed. They believe in the preservation of land rather than the management. And we are seeing what has happened after thirty years of those failed policies. We just watched some of the best timber left in this year is burn up in the Caledor Fire. And I just can't imagine what the animals, the bear cubs walking along fifty that are confused, how many animals had to die to, to prove your point about pres- preserving the land and letting mother nature take its course? Because it's just absolute, absolutely ridiculous. And get Jeff Margolis into that boardroom and this county needs to tell him, it's damn time you start managing your forests, or I don't know what you need to do, sue them. But it's time. Thank you.
All right. Well, I do have to say, I did talk to Jeff Marcellus and I had a few comments similar, I think that was John Campbell, and I heard back that he felt that I was, um, what was it, I was attacking his employees or something like that. Um, but anyway, I wa- I was not attacking his employees in person, but in general, maybe I was, because there's been too mu- too much environmentalism and not, not enough, um, forest management. And the end result is, hey, our forests get wiped out in the environment.
Unfortunately, with all the fires burning right now, I'll, I'll disagree on, you know, on one thing, Sean, is that right now, if you, you start kicking the Forest Service, everybody's gonna be sympathetic to them because they're so busy right now with all the fires. I think we have to wait until you can focus on it and you lose the drama that's around us right now. And, um, just right now, we should be focusing on helping our Amador County residents and helping anybody else we can that-
That's true.
That is having, uh, issues with the fire and with displacement.
Agreed. I'll say one more thing. I do have sympathy for Mr. Jeff Marcellus. I think he just took over as Forest Supervisor and, uh, I'm, uh, I feel sorry for the guy. I mean, that's, it's a bad, it's a bad time to step in that position.
Well, uh-
Why not?
It has to be quick because we're, we're really tabling this. This is not, um-
You, I understand, but you tabled last time too and the-
Well, we, we need to get the right Caledor state quota this year.
Yeah.
To have a discussion.
I, I understand. I, I just, I just want to say that I certainly do not disagree with you, um, Supervisor Forrester. And the, what, um, Supervisor Neto's comments made me realize is that, just like everything else that I'm trying to get across, um, whether it's about this water issue or about this, we need to be looking at the Bay Area and the populated parts of the state and get those, the people that represent those places on board with this, because this impacts them. And we need to, as, I think, as this, as here, as rural dwellers who understand the forest, um, we need, we need them to understand what it's providing for them, what our stewardship and what the lack of stewardship by the Forest Service is providing or not providing for them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, we do have Mr. Campbell, uh, back on Zoom.
Okay.
Go ahead, John.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, Richard, I'm not expecting them to be in there tomorrow, but I certainly don't want this issue just to die off like time certainly often does when we, time goes on and then we ignore things. I also meant to s- comment that we have a water issue in California. I read a University of Nevada study last year where somewhere in the forty percent of this year's snow runoff is being sucked up by underbrush before it could even get to our reservoirs. So we really need to address these issues. And I think our county needs to be proactive and a stakeholder in this situation. Uh, also with our fire insurance, our, your, your constituents can't afford fire insurance and all we get told is defensible space. You can rake all the pine needles in your yard you want, but when you've got the Forest Service on the other side of your fence that hasn't managed their land for forty years and creates these mega fires that just burn up everything around them, they're not gonna ever be able to afford fire insurance and it's gonna keep getting worse. So representing your constituents on this issue and telling the Forest Service that status quo is not tenable is very important. Thank you. Bye.
All right. And I agree with, with, uh, John, and I think the best place to start this action is at RCRC where you have a coalition of thirty-six counties that can speak with one voice-
Well, even, um-
Represent a lot of, uh, rural constituents.
Ev- even NACO because, um, the, uh, Western United States is, uh, is experiencing the same situation. It's probably a little more, more acute here, but, um, you know, it's not just, uh, you know, not just California.
Yeah, and I, I'm on the Rural Action Caucus for NACO and that's one of the-
Okay.
Issues that's being addressed.
Good. So, um, we can bring this back in the future when the, the fire subsides. I don't think we're gonna forget about this. And, um, perhaps, uh, this could even be discussed, uh, by the Chair and Vice Chair, uh, at, um, uh, administrative meetings so that we can, um, you know, get our ducks lined up. Anyway.
Mr. Chair, could I make one-
I don't think it has to be.
Yes.
Thank you for indulging me. Um, I think we almost need to make this more a dollar and cents thing. The environmentalists have choked off the logging industry for thirty or forty years and this is what we've got. And in all the reports, I watched Channel Three for five hours yesterday, they didn't mention once the value of the timber stand that burned up because of just the Caledor Fire, not including the tamarack. If you took the environmental controls off for thirty years, let logging do what they always did before, you'd have enough lumber and enough jobs, you wouldn't have homeless people. If you did, we could build them a house. Plus the cost of putting it out.
Right. Well, we can discuss all that, you know? I, I don't know if everyone's gonna agree with you on that one, but, uh-
One thing too, Frank. Oh, sorry.
I don't think they will, but that doesn't mean I'm wrong.
Okay. Yes, Brian?
I, I think you're a heck of a lot more right than wrong, Pat. I think you're pretty much right on, right on target. I don't see us going to the Administrative Committee for an action or a letter. I see us coming back the full board, having a real robust discussion.
What I was proposing, the Administrative Committee can discuss who to bring forward as stakeholders beyond just the Forest Service. I think we should have Cal Fire there and some of the other experts to give us the information that we need.
I don't think we want to miss the mark either, have the county elected there, but I think we should invite, uh, Bigelow's Board just office and McClintock's office, have all of our elected representatives represented at that meeting, if they don't show up in person.
Yeah, at least, uh, have their, um, staff available.
Well, yeah, I, I'll, I'll say this, um, having some experts there is good. Um, there's some, there's some local people that I'd say are probably the equal, actually better than the experts. Um, you take like Ed Stufeneger, you take the Heisenbuddels, um, you can't get much better than that. I mean, you may have people that have badges or titles, but, uh, you take people like, um, Heisenbuddel, Stufeneger, they understand those forests.
Yeah, well, I, I, I do want to listen to some of that, you know, one of the things I heard from the, the Cal Fire representative today was, uh, this thing burns right across rocks, okay? There's not a lot of thinning you need done in rocks, you know? And there's, uh, we've had ten years of drought, things are bone dry. That's what's driving this fire.
Well, that's true.
There's fuel on the ground, but the fuel is bone dry and the forest floor has no water in it to cool that fire and contain it.
That is true, Frank, but the thing is, if, I, I grew up in a kid-
So, so there, there are factors that we cannot change and they're pretty significant. So, like I said, I'd like to put it all on the table. I'm more than happy to have that discussion.
Okay. And I agree with what you said to a certain degree.
Okay.
But the area this fire took off in, I used to run ca- cattle down there and did logging. And matter of fact, I think in the same, same road that this fire was off of, probably when I first became Supervisor, I took staff member Alex Snyder, I think, from Congressman Lundgren's office down there. I got in trouble because we went around Eldorado National Forest and without thinking, we went down into part of Eldorado County and, oh my gosh, Oh, Neto, you can't go down Eldorado County, that's. But one of the places I showed them, fuel loading, was down there. I think it's Mill Road or whatever, down off Omar Ranch Road. Yeah, did it burn across ro- rock outcropping? Absolutely, yes. But we created such a firebomb, or it's such a firebomb came out of that Omar Ranch area, that, that whole, that whole area down there, Cat Creek, all that, when it, when it, when it hit, started hitting up Kirkwood, Silver Lake, it just got so much heat, stuff been pre-baked and it was dry, like you said. But the amount of fuel in those forests created a monster coming up from atop those mountains.
Well, again, let's, let's listen to all the experts and let's put something together that's, um, more than just a letter that someone's gonna tell us about their electric, you know, supporting their electric rates, anyway, whatever it was.
If I, if I may add half a second here, uh, Caledor Fire has, uh, has spent seventy million dollars. Dixie Fire has spent four hundred and eight million dollars on putting that fire on. Ooh!
Yeah, well, I, I think also, you know, biomass utilization, we're not really seeing that. That's something as well. Um, anyway, there's, there's a, there's a lot of players that I think if you really want to engage this, that's what you're gonna have to do. that I think if you really want to engage this, that's what you're going to have to do.
I agree.
All right. Can we move on? All right, thanks, Sean. All right, item five J, this was a letter to the Governor declaring Amador and Eldorado Counties disaster declaration and disaster areas, but I believe that they were, Eldorado already was, and Amador was just put on the list this morning, I saw on the news, so.
Well, I, I didn't-
Emergency, I think, was it emergency or disaster?
Eldorado was a disaster. I hadn't seen the Amador declaration yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess, because there's a difference between emergency and a disaster.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't paying close attention. So what do we want to do at this point? Do we want to give the Chair-
I guess they-
Responsibility to do a letter, but if it's already been done to-
If we need to.
If we need to.
If we need to. I think the disaster, the disaster declaration for Eldorado may work for what Amador needs, I, I believe, but-
Okay.
I'd say give approval if we need to. I agree with Richard.
All right, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second? All right, motion by Supervisor Onetto, second by Supervisor Brown. Could we have a roll call vote? Did, oh, Pat, did you have any comment?
No, sir, no, Mr. Chair.
Is there any public comment? Okay, could you call a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And last item on the regular agenda before we go back into closed is the regular minutes from August tenth, and I gave some minor corrections to-
Good to approve with minor corrections. I submitted some in January for two.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so Supervisor Brown beat you.
I'll let him have it, he's-
Oh, okay, Supervisor Crew gets the second. Supervisor Forrester made the motion, so could we call the vote, please?
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Supervisor Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Axe?
Aye.
Supervisor Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
And we're going to go into closed session.
Okay.